Good evening and welcome to our January 26, 2021 Board of Commissioners meeting. If willing and able, please stand for our invocation by Imam Bashir Mundi, followed by the pledge by our officer, RM Massey. Thank you.
Bismillah, rahmanir rahim. With the name of God, most gracious, most merciful, our Lord and our God Almighty, our Cherisher, our Sustainer, our Creator, our Benefactor, our Possessor, the one to whom we belong and the one to whom we all return, the uncaused cause of all causes, and the source of all light, the source of all mercy, the source of all love, the source of all compassion. O Allah, God Almighty, we come to you humbly requesting that you help us to find peace, truth, and well-being in the worlds. With our new administration of this great nation, we beseech you, O Lord, to give us peace and security between nations, between tribes, ethnicities, and races; peace and tranquility and goodness in our nation, in our great state of Georgia and in the great county of Cobb. God Almighty, grant us the wisdom to be the best nation in the world so that other nations may follow our lead in doing the good that we establish. God Almighty, grant us the wisdom to be the best state, the best county, the best city in the United States of America so that others may follow our lead in doing good, establishing good, and leaving a legacy of nothing but good. O Allah, our Lord and Cherisher and Sustainer, our God Almighty, grant us the wisdom to truly enjoy the freedom that you have granted us in this world and make us amongst those you benefit from it and make us amongst those who do not abuse the gifts and the blessings of this world and the trust that you have entrusted to us as your vice gerents and your deputies and your representatives on the earth. O Allah, God Almighty, make this day a day of true freedom for us, from all the worldly desires, base desires. Make it of true freedom and liberation for us; freedom from hate, freedom from prejudice, freedom from injustice, freedom from inequalities, freedom from disease, freedom from pain, and freedom from sorrow. True freedom from oppressors and true freedom from being oppressed. O Allah, our God, our Lord, the Lord of all of us, the black of us, the white of us, the brown of us, and all of us of every hue and color and every language and ethnicity and background, show us always truth and give us the courage to pursue it. Show us always falsehood as falsehood and give us the courage and the strength to oppose it. Show us justice and give us the courage to stand for it. Show us injustice as injustice and give us the courage to oppress it, to give us the courage to oppose it even if it be against ourselves. O our Lord, our Cherisher, our Sustainer, you are peace; you are the source of all peace and you are the source of all health and well-being. Save us from this pandemic, this COVID-19 pandemic that the whole world has become subjected to. Save us from this grave and serious tragedy and suffering that the whole world is witnessing. Bless the souls of those whom you have taken through this and grant that whatever suffering they suffered in life, whatever atom, whatever drop of suffering, of inconvenience, of pain, grant that it be a source of comfort for them in the afterlife, which we truly believe is the true life. Those that are currently suffering with the pandemic or with any health ailments, oh God, grant them relief and grant them healing, full healing and full recovery; for you are the source of all health and well-being. Bless our commissioners, oh Lord, to deliberate with clarity, with sincerity, and with the best interest of all the citizens of this great county at heart. And, oh Lord, help them to be successful in their endeavors. Oh God, show them humility and let them show humility and show them what arrogance is and help them to oppose the arrogance. And, oh Lord, as you are the source of all compassion and mercy, let them deliberate and decide and take action with your divine compassion at heart. O Lord, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we start our meeting, I would like to take some liberty to recognize the passing of some loved ones in our community. Most recently, we've had the passing of Ms. Judy Williams, who served on our planning commission and also served with the county for 28 years in Cobb County Community Development. We can have a moment of silence in her memory, please. I'd also like to recognize that we have had the passing of some members of our education community as well. We've had the passing of teachers Dana Johnson and Cynthia Lindsay most recently and prior to that, that of Patrick Key. If we can remember their service to our Cobb County community by a brief moment of silence. And finally, near and dear to many of our hearts and no stranger to many of us in Cobb County with our stadium, I'd ask that we remember the life of Hank Aaron, baseball great, who's contributed a lot to the game but also to our country. We can have a brief moment of silence. Thank you. With that, I call this meeting to order. We do have some modifications to our agenda tonight, which I will read. I move that we add Agenda Item Number 49 to our consent agenda to approve a settlement of a worker's compensation claim on behalf of Brandon Kelly. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, if you may please raise your hand. Do we have Commissioner Burrow with us remotely?
I don't have her video in front of me. I don't know if her hand was raised.
I'm sorry. Yes, I'm raising my hand.
Okay, wonderful. Good to see you, Commissioner Burrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so the motion passes 5-0. I also move that we add Agenda Item Number 50 for a presentation from Cobb Douglas Public Health regarding COVID-19. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion or question? All of those in favor, if you may please raise your hand. And that motion passes 5-0. Another modification is to move that Agenda Item Number 50 for a presentation by Cobb Douglas Public Health to the top of our agenda during our public hearing. I move that we move the presentation accordingly. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion or questions? All right, all of those in favor, if you may please raise your hand. The motion passes 5-0. With that, we'll have a presentation from Cobb Douglas Public Health regarding COVID-19 before we get into our public hearing with community development.
Good evening and welcome to our January 26, 2021 Board of Commissioners meeting. If willing and able, please stand for our invocation by Imam Bashir Mundi, followed by the pledge by our officer, RM Massey. Thank you.
Bismillah, rahmanir rahim. With the name of God, most gracious, most merciful, our Lord and our God Almighty, our Cherisher, our Sustainer, our Creator, our Benefactor, our Possessor, the one to whom we belong and the one to whom we all return, the uncaused cause of all causes, and the source of all light, the source of all mercy, the source of all love, the source of all compassion. O Allah, God Almighty, we come to you humbly requesting that you help us to find peace, truth, and well-being in the worlds. With our new administration of this great nation, we beseech you, O Lord, to give us peace and security between nations, between tribes, ethnicities, and races; peace and tranquility and goodness in our nation, in our great state of Georgia and in the great county of Cobb. God Almighty, grant us the wisdom to be the best nation in the world so that other nations may follow our lead in doing the good that we establish. God Almighty, grant us the wisdom to be the best state, the best county, the best city in the United States of America so that others may follow our lead in doing good, establishing good, and leaving a legacy of nothing but good. O Allah, our Lord and Cherisher and Sustainer, our God Almighty, grant us the wisdom to truly enjoy the freedom that you have granted us in this world and make us amongst those you benefit from it and make us amongst those who do not abuse the gifts and the blessings of this world and the trust that you have entrusted to us as your vice gerents and your deputies and your representatives on the earth. O Allah, God Almighty, make this day a day of true freedom for us, from all the worldly desires, base desires. Make it of true freedom and liberation for us; freedom from hate, freedom from prejudice, freedom from injustice, freedom from inequalities, freedom from disease, freedom from pain, and freedom from sorrow. True freedom from oppressors and true freedom from being oppressed. O Allah, our God, our Lord, the Lord of all of us, the black of us, the white of us, the brown of us, and all of us of every hue and color and every language and ethnicity and background, show us always truth and give us the courage to pursue it. Show us always falsehood as falsehood and give us the courage and the strength to oppose it. Show us justice and give us the courage to stand for it. Show us injustice as injustice and give us the courage to oppress it, to give us the courage to oppose it even if it be against ourselves. O our Lord, our Cherisher, our Sustainer, you are peace; you are the source of all peace and you are the source of all health and well-being. Save us from this pandemic, this COVID-19 pandemic that the whole world has become subjected to. Save us from this grave and serious tragedy and suffering that the whole world is witnessing. Bless the souls of those whom you have taken through this and grant that whatever suffering they suffered in life, whatever atom, whatever drop of suffering, of inconvenience, of pain, grant that it be a source of comfort for them in the afterlife, which we truly believe is the true life. Those that are currently suffering with the pandemic or with any health ailments, oh God, grant them relief and grant them healing, full healing and full recovery; for you are the source of all health and well-being. Bless our commissioners, oh Lord, to deliberate with clarity, with sincerity, and with the best interest of all the citizens of this great county at heart. And, oh Lord, help them to be successful in their endeavors. O God, show them humility and let them show humility and show them what arrogance is and help them to oppose the arrogance. And, oh Lord, as you are the source of all compassion and mercy, let them deliberate and decide and take action with your divine compassion at heart. O Lord, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we start our meeting, I would like to take some liberty to recognize the passing of some loved ones in our community. Most recently, we've had the passing of Ms. Judy Williams, who served on our planning commission and also served with the county for 28 years in Cobb County Community Development. We can have a moment of silence in her memory, please. I'd also like to recognize that we have had the passing of some members of our education community as well. We've had the passing of teachers Dana Johnson and Cynthia Lindsay most recently and prior to that, that of Patrick Key. If we can remember their service to our Cobb County community by a brief moment of silence. And finally, near and dear to many of our hearts and no stranger to many of us in Cobb County with our stadium, I'd ask that we remember the life of Hank Aaron, baseball great, who's contributed a lot to the game but also to our country. We can have a brief moment of silence. Thank you. With that, I call this meeting to order. We do have some modifications to our agenda tonight, which I will read. I move that we add Agenda Item Number 49 to our consent agenda to approve a settlement of a worker's compensation claim on behalf of Brandon Kelly. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion or question? All right, all of those in favor, if you may please raise your hand. The motion passes 5-0. With that, we'll have a presentation from Cobb Douglas Public Health regarding COVID-19 before we get into our public hearing with community development.
Good evening, everybody. This is, I'm Dr. Janet Memark and I'm here to give you a COVID update today. Let me see if I can get my slides to come up. Right. Okay, can everybody see that okay?
Yes, we see your presentation.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll start off today with the numbers and so these are the numbers off the Department of Public Health and we see some positive movement and we're really excited to see this. And if you're following nationwide, it looks like we're very hopeful that we have hit the peak of this latest surge and we pray that we are coming off of that. But when you look at the cases of the PCR numbers for per 100,000 over the last two weeks, it's down to 725. And then you can see as we're looking at our curve, our Epi curve over to the right, that we maybe have hit the peak there and maybe coming off of that. What is unfortunate, though, is that we have had a lot of deaths in the county. We know from this pandemic that we will often see the cases first and then you'll see hospitalizations and you'll see deaths. And we have, we've added just a huge number of deaths over the last week in our county and we're up to 263. You can see just a sustained kind of a curve that you see on the right of the number of deaths that we've had, the people who have succumbed to COVID-19. When you look at the cases, these are the total number of cases. That's the PCR number with those rapid antigens that have been included. So over 60,000 cases that we've been seeing throughout the district since the beginning of the pandemic. When we look at the two-week case rate, this is the one I like to do. I like to include the antigens in there because they are positive cases and it's down to 885. You do remember, you might remember last time I came was probably over 1,100 per 100,000 people at that point, so we're definitely going in the right direction. We are seeing the number of deaths, though, that it continues to climb. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion or questions? All right. All of those in favor, if you may please raise your hand. Okay, the motion passes 5-0. With that, we'll have a presentation from Cobb Douglas Public Health regarding COVID-19 before we get into our public hearing with Community Development.
Good evening, everybody. This is, I'm Dr. Janet Memark and I'm here to give you a COVID update today. Let me see if I can get my slides to come up. Right. Okay, can everybody see that okay?
Yes, we see your presentation.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll start off today with the numbers and so these are the numbers off the Department of Public Health and we see some positive movement and we're really excited to see this. And if you're following nationwide, it looks like we're very hopeful that we have hit the peak of this latest surge and we pray that we are coming off of that. But when you look at the cases of the PCR numbers for per 100,000 over the last two weeks, it's down to 725. And then you can see as we're looking at our curve, our EPI curve over to the right, that we maybe have hit the peak there and maybe coming off of that. What is unfortunate, though, is that we have had a lot of deaths in the county. We know from this pandemic that we will often see the cases first and then you'll see hospitalizations and you'll see deaths. And we have, we've added just a huge number of deaths over the last week in our county and we're up to 263. You can see just a sustained kind of a curve that you see on the right of the number of deaths that we've had, the people who have succumbed to COVID-19. When you look at the cases, these are the total number of cases. That's the PCR number with those rapid antigens that have been included. So over 60,000 cases that we've been seeing throughout the district since the beginning of the pandemic. When we look at the two-week case rate, this is the one I like to do. I like to include the antigens in there because they are positive cases and it's down to 885. You do remember, you might remember, last time I came, it was probably over 1,100 per 100,000 people at that point. So we're definitely going in the right direction. We are seeing the number of deaths, though, that it continues to climb, but hopefully we'll see a slowdown of that soon. That's the last indicator that we see. Some also really good news is that we are seeing improvement in hospital admissions. And so from last week to this week, there's been a very nice drop and we just pray that this keeps going in the right direction. But there have been some spaces that have been opened up in our area hospitals. So it's definitely trending in the right direction for the county. I want to go ahead and just talk about the vaccines a little bit and so just remind you where we are in our phases and there's been a lot of discussion about that. And we are in that 1A-plus phase because we added on the 65 and older. And so when I say we, this is actually decided by DPH and the Governor's Office in conjunction with ACIP and CDC recommendations. And so we have gotten some emails and some questions about the phases and our deciding the phases. I just want to make sure everybody understood that we actually do not, on a local level, make any decisions about the who goes into the phases. And so we are locally just here really to try to execute what the Governor and Georgia DPH has recommended. And so this is currently the phases that we see, the 65 and older and our healthcare workers and frontline safety workers, as well as long-term care facility workers and residents as well. So we talked vaccines. This week, we switched to a new system and we had a little bit of a glitch with the system where we had some extra appointments that were scheduled. So we had to move those appointments, but I want to make sure everybody knows that your appointments are, you're not canceled, you're just moved back a little bit. And so so far, we have at Cobb, over the last month, we have given out 2,309 doses and over 10,000 of those doses were in Cobb County and Jim Miller alone. Yesterday, they were able to do 690 doses and then Douglas Health Center is ramping up as well and they were able to do 216 doses. So we talked about our status. We had some scheduling issues. We share the same scheduling platform that Fulton and DeKalb uses and so we feel like we've worked out some of the issues with that, with the scheduling. And so unfortunately, though, what we're hearing is that the vaccine supply continues to be limited and we do not expect any increase in our vaccine supply until about March or April. And that actually goes along with what we're hearing from the federal government. If you look on national news, that it's not anticipated that the production of vaccine will really have a measurable increase until about that time. So for the Moderna and Pfizer vaccines, that's what we anticipate. Now, we do have some hope for the AstraZeneca and the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. These two vaccines are a different mode than the Pfizer and the Moderna vaccines. They operate a little bit differently and are looking like single-dose vaccines. We anticipate that we may see them come out and go through EUA in the next few weeks. And so maybe in February or early March, we will see them come into production as well. And we had heard some kind of news that maybe they wouldn't be able to meet production promises, but today we heard that at least Johnson &amp; Johnson seems to be on target to meet the promises that were made. So that's good news so far. We are working with community partners, large community partners, on the creation of mass vaccination sites. And so this is in the very initial planning stages because we don't have enough vaccine right now, but we are gearing with the metro community to prepare to have big populations of our population to be vaccinated in large groups. And we as, you know, the healthcare system as well as public health, feel like this is really one of the only ways that we'll be able to vaccinate our population quickly. And that's all pending having vaccines available to us. So takeaway is just that, you know, from our update today, we do hope that we'll have more vaccine in the horizon, but it looks like we'll have to go through at least another month with having the same amount of vaccines that are allocated to us right now. And I think we heard today that there was a request for over 2.3 million doses of vaccine by all of the providers that have requested and are authorized. And only, you know, 80,000 are allocated outside of the long-term care facility. So that gives you an idea of how few vaccines are coming out compared to what the demand is across the state. There are some concerns for the variant states and the variant strains of COVID-19. You might have heard about this nationally. It is confirmed to be in Georgia and we also have had a community case as well of that. We have different strains that are out there right now and so we are keeping an eye on that because there is some concern of increased transmissibility as well as a question of if there's more virulence or if it could be more deadly. And so it is thought the vaccines will work against these strains, but the degree to how effective they are is still kind of in question right now. But we do know, and I know we've discussed this many times, that what works. And so as you get the vaccine, I've seen multiple cases of people who have gotten their first vaccine and then let their guard down and have become positive for COVID-19 soon after getting the first vaccine. So please remember that you do only get limited protection after the first vaccine. We have to continue wearing our masks and keeping our distance and washing our hands and really be really careful about gathering outside of your household until these case numbers can come down considerably. So and it's going in the right direction, but let's, if we let off the, you know, the gas pedal on this, it can quickly go the wrong way. I just want to thank, I want to thank our public health folks. I know that we've taken a beating over the last few weeks, but we have some people that are working extremely hard and long hours to try to do as much as we possibly can for our community. And so we're working hard on that. And our healthcare folks that, you know, I pray all the time that they will have some reprieve from how hard they've been working since the beginning of the pandemic. And our education heroes and Chairwoman, Cupid mentioned about the features that we've lost to the pandemic and I think every single one of them, we all just, you know, it's just such a loss and so many people that we have lost to this pandemic is really tough. Want to thank Cobb Fire as well for helping us to vaccinate our public safety folks and help us to do what we need to do to try to get as many people vaccinated as we possibly can. And thank you to Cobb County and letting us live at Jim Miller and doing the great work that we do. We were able to turn that quickly into a vaccine site within days and that was truly helpful in helping our community get as many vaccines out there as possible. So we appreciate all your support and helping with that.
Well, thank you, Dr. Memark. We can never say thanks enough. And I want to personally thank you. I saw Lisa Crossman. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you for your heroic efforts, both of you, and not only responding to the correspondence that you've been receiving, but being out there in the field and helping to monitor and actually vaccinate some of the members of our community. All right, now I'm going to turn things over to our board to see if they have any questions. Yes, Commissioner Richardson.
I do want to say thank you guys so much for everything that you're doing for the community and I know that it's been difficult in working with the constraints from the federal side, from the state side, and really just gauging all of your resources. So I do want to extend that offer. Any way that we can partner with you as the county, as the Board of Commissioners, in terms of resources or help or logistics, whatever that may be, please just let us know and we are happy to accommodate because the community safety does come first for us. As another aspect to that, I did want to say as well, Dr. Memark, I've seen you take all the rounds on, I've seen you on a lot of different town halls, so I appreciate your commitment to doing as much as you can for bringing transparency with what's going on. And I know it's just really hard for everybody to, you know, keep pace and make this happen. So like I said, however we can be of help, let us know and, you know, happy to partner with different community partners as well. So just keep us posted. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other comments or questions? Dr. Memark, if you could... Yes, is there someone else? Commissioner Burrow?
Yes. I'm Chair, yes. Thank you. I would just like to echo your and Commissioner Richardson's sentiments and really thank these ladies and their staff and all the healthcare workers that are administering the vaccine and scheduling. It has been quite an ordeal and very challenging and I really appreciate, especially Lisa Crossman, fielding some of the calls and emails that we're receiving and getting fireworks over. But really, it all comes down to safety and getting everybody that we can in that Phase 1A vaccinated. I'm in that groove. I've had my first dose. My second dose is coming up in a week and a half, so I'm really anxious and ready so that I can get back to work there at the office. But thank you so much and like Commissioner Richardson said, we are here to help. I know we had a conversation today, Lisa, and, you know, let us, please let us know how we can help. I know you're at the mercy of the state Georgia Department of Health and with the supply and all, and that is challenging as well right now. So just please let us know how we can partner with you to help our constituents and the public. God bless you for what you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We really, you know, you all have been such a tremendous partner this entire past year as we've walked through this pandemic. And so I just can't say enough about your staff, the support for Jim Miller Park, all of your EMA and your public safety folks and Parks and Rec. I mean, the list goes on and on. We really, everywhere we've turned, you all have been willing to help. And most recently, we have been working quite a bit with senior services to figure out how we could better reach our vulnerable seniors and be able to get the vaccine out to them in the most convenient way when we have enough vaccine. So shout out to Cobb Senior Services as well.
Thank you, Lisa. Dr. Memark, there had been a couple of comments with respect to the second dose of the vaccine. Can you provide the public some information around that?
Yeah, absolutely. And so thank you for asking that. So we, our staff is working very hard right now to go ahead and schedule all of those second doses. So please, if you do not receive a notification, you know, a few days before your second dose is due, just let us know and we will, you know, make sure that your second dose is scheduled out. We've had a few, and I'm talking very few folks, that didn't have an email address or a phone number that was available. So, you know, you can reach out to us and we'll make sure that we have that appointment for you. So we're scheduling all of those and I've mentioned vaccine supplies are very limited right now. And so we are scheduling, we're really prioritizing our second doses over the first doses. And so we just don't want to keep going and then find out that we're not going to have enough for the second doses. So we make sure that we get our second doses in and if we have some extra, that we go ahead and schedule first doses on top of that. And so I want to ensure everybody that you will get a second dose. Now, what's important to know here is that the CDC has released new guidelines on the second dose. And so, and we've mentioned this, I think, before, but there's been some more solid guidelines that, you know, they want you to be able to get as close to the date as possible. So for Pfizer, it's 21 days after the first dose and for Moderna, it is 28 days. Now, that being said, you know, in circumstances where there, you know, is some shortages and stuff like that, you can go up to 42 days for both of the vaccines. So we are trying to be well within that 42 days. We're trying to get as close as possible to that 28 day because we have Moderna. And so I just want to make sure everybody knew that to, and, you know, don't be too anxious about it. The studies that were done were to see how quickly they could do the second dose. It didn't go into, you know, how far out. And so the CDC feels very comfortable that 42 days that you're going to be okay. So I just want to make sure everybody knew that and we will make sure that you get your second dose if you got it from us.
Thank you, Doctor.
And Dr. Memark, some folks have had a question about whether they needed to get back on our website to make an appointment for their second dose. We just want to make sure that everybody hears that if you got your first dose with Cobb and Douglas Public Health, that we will have staff reaching out to you and you do not have to schedule that second dose on our website.
Thank you, Lisa and Dr. Memark. And what I'm hearing is that you'll reach out to them days before the second dose. So they may not hear from you immediately because I'm getting some emails from people who are expecting an immediate, you know, contact from public health and they might not be within that window of a few days of their second vaccine.
Yeah. Yeah, we hope that our scheduling program, the new one, will be able to, they are able to stick in that second dose, but because we started a little bit later in the process, we're making sure that the first ones are done a little bit more manually.
Okay, great.
And also making sure that we have vaccine in hand because we don't want to schedule that second dose appointment and then have to cancel with you.
Yeah.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Again, I'll ask one more time, do any commissioners have any questions or comments? Thank you, ladies. We thank you so much for your time, especially considering all that you have going on every day in administering the vaccine. We truly appreciate all the work you and your team are doing to help keep our citizens safe. And again, as Commissioner Richardson and Commissioner Burrow shared, we want to be a partner, so just let us know how we can help.
We will. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
You too.
Thanks. All right. With that, we are going to turn to our next agenda item, which is to conduct the first public hearing to solicit comments and input on proposed amendments to our county code.
Good evening, Chairwoman and Commissioners. It's good to be with you all this evening. Again, we're here for the 2021 Code Amendments. This is the first public hearing. We are required to, so the second public hearing is scheduled for February 9th. So that'll be your next meeting and we'll be back with the second hearing at that point. As we did this afternoon in the work session, we'll go through the presentation with all the code amendments that are being proposed. We'll move through it probably a little bit more quickly, but if anyone has any questions, please feel free to stop me. And then at the conclusion of the presentation, we'd ask that you would open the public hearing. So the first public here, or the first code amendments that we have this evening are to Chapter 6. And as I mentioned this afternoon, most of the, a number of the code amendments that are being proposed this year are amendments to come in line with state law, new legislation, or to come in line with the Building Code, those sorts of things. A lot of cleanup-type issues and not really any really significant policy shifts here that we're proposing. So Chapter 6, alcoholic beverages, these code amendments in large part are in response to state legislation that was adopted this year or last year. The first is to add a definition for variety store to Section 6-1, and this would be to differentiate a variety store from a store that sells groceries or, you know, is a grocery store. Also, we've added a definition of sample and tasting event to come into consistency with new state law pertaining to sampling. As I shared with you this afternoon, last year during the limited operation service due to COVID-19, at that point, the Board authorized Community Development to accept payment other than certified funds for alcohol licenses. This would allow for online payment and, you know, some more convenience for our businesses. So we're proposing to update the code to reflect that so that we can continue doing that and really bring that operation a little bit more into current times. With another amendment that's being proposed, and this is one that was sponsored by a commissioner, was to allow for grocery stores, in addition to farm wineries, distilleries and breweries, to hold both a retail license for package sales as well as to be able to dispense liquor or alcohol by the drink. Currently, you could not do that, both sell alcohol by the drink in the same room as you would be selling packaged sales. So that's something that's being proposed this evening. And then again, to allow for sampling and tasting events in accordance with the state law that was adopted last year. Also, last year, the General Assembly authorized home delivery and delivery of malt beverages, wine, as well as distilled liquors by retailers holding a package license. So again, we are proposing to incorporate that into the county code to allow that here in Cobb County. The other thing that was changed in state law is just as a couple of years ago, the brunch bill changed the starting time for Sunday liquor-by-the-drink sales to 11:30 from 12:30. This year, the State, the General Assembly authorized sales starting at 11:30 for package sales versus 12:30. So that would be for any... So that would be for any establishment holding a package license, they would be able to start selling at 11:30 on Sunday. So this change again comes into line with state law. So those are all the amendments to Chapter 6 that are being proposed. If there are no questions, we'll keep things moving. The next chapter that's being amended is Chapter 18, and this is our building regulations. What we're doing here is we're bringing the Board of Adjustment and Appeals in line with the, what's prescribed by the International Building Code. Of course, the county has adopted the IBC, and that's the the standard that we follow in implementing building regulations. Part of that is that it does prescribe some very specific standards by which the Board of Adjustment and Appeals should be established. And it includes, to be sure that we have representation from various areas of expertise, be it mechanical and plumbing, structural engineering, electrical, and so forth, so that we can make sure that we have those experts on this board in the event that there is an appeal of a decision of the chief building official, that we'll have the right people there with the right expertise, the right knowledge, to make good decisions on those things. We've also incorporated in there that appeals should be filed within 20 days after a permit notice has been filed, and that hearings will be conducted either at the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Construction Appeals, or at the, you know, within 10 days of the filing of the appeal. The next amendment is to Chapter 22, Cable Communications. And as we discussed this afternoon, that chapter is being repealed in its entirety. Those businesses, cable and video service providers, are governed by federal and state law. So in the interest of being consistent with federal and state law, the county chapter pertaining to this will be repealed. And Chapter 50, Articles 3 and 4, these revisions are being done, and this is the environment chapter. These revisions are being proposed in order to bring the county into conformance with the Metropolitan North Georgia Water Planning District's Model Stormwater Ordinance. So again, just to come in line with the the standards that we typically adhere to. The next amendment to Chapter 50, this is to the noise ordinance, and this is another one that was commissioner-sponsored after a number of concerns raised by residents about lawn equipment and lawn care starting very early in the morning. So to change the hours for which people could operate that lawn equipment so that it would be a little quieter between 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM. And this, of course, would include lawn mowers, weed eaters, and blowers, and just really trying to keep the peace and quiet for the neighbors here in Cobb County. And again, the noise ordinance, as always, is enforced by Cobb County Police, and they have reviewed this amendment. And the next amendment starts at Chapter 54. This is Fire Prevention and Protection, so I'm going to ask Chief Johnson to come up and cover this.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners and County Managers. Fire has several that we would like to present to you all this evening to consider in Chapter 54. The first one is to adopt Sections 103 and 105 of the International Fire Code to get more in streamline with the International Building Code. That'll just make less confusion and streamline some issues through those codes. The next one is actually through the Water Department, but it affects us as well since it's in Chapter 54, and it's the use of 3-inch fire hydrant meter. And they just, rather than listing the authorized use of water penalty, the language be revised to just reference the water systems rate schedule. The next one is Section 54-62, the Fire Watch Special Fire Services, and that's to prevent us to charge fees for services outside the normal scope of emergency response for standby as fire watch and lift assists. The next one, Section 54-63, is addressing and occupant directions within multi-building developments. It's just the wayfinding provisions within large properties. And on those, we'll make sure that, as requested, that we set an exact date, so moving forward that people will understand it's very clear. The next one in Article 4 is the Automatic External Defibrillators. And basically, all this is saying is new businesses moving forward with an occupancy load of 300 or greater will be required to have an AED. Section 54-103, we're just asking to change our fines to fees similar to the police department to make those more in line with each other. And then the last one for us is actually in Chapter 18, but we're going to go ahead and cover that one. And again, it's just, it's Section 118, requires access for fire apparatus, and it's again getting us in line with DOT on clarifying some existing stuff between us and the Fire Marshals, or DOT and the Fire Marshal's Office. Thanks.
Okay, the next chapter is Historic Preservation, Chapter 66. As we discussed during the work session this afternoon, there are a number of ambiguities that have been identified in our current code, and we wanted to clear those up so that moving forward, as we are reviewing certificates of appropriateness for our historic districts, both the Concord Covered Bridge District, as well as the Clarkdale Mill Village District, that will have some clear standards that will be following. So some of those clarifications were to add definitions for building site and structure. We also have a change to the notification requirements to bring the notification for public hearings in line with what we do for other public hearings, specifically zoning, so that way it's consistent there, no less than 15 days, no more than 45 days. Some of the things, Chapter, or Section 6682 and 6685, both of these really pertain to approval of certificates of appropriateness. And again, this is where we've continued to have some discussion with the neighbors in the Concord Covered Bridge District, and we had, as we shared this afternoon, a good discussion with them last week with the county manager. So we are working on some additional language there as follow-up to that. That'll really ultimately bring our code more in line with the model ordinance for historic preservation that has been put together by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. But essentially, the intent is the same, that we'll have clear standards for the Historic Preservation Commission to review certificates of appropriateness, and then to either approve them, approve them with conditions, or deny them, and also so that we're clear on what properties and what geographic area should be considered in reviewing those. The next section is in Chapter 78. This is our licensing chapter, and of course, as we all know, the Major League All-Star Game and related events will be held here in Cobb County this year. So this specific code here is very, it only applies to one week, July 7th through July 14th of this year, which is the week when the All-Star Game events will be held. And the intent here is really to ensure that we're providing for vehicular and pedestrian circulation and management of those things, and also that we are providing for, you know, the aesthetics that we want to see in that area as those events are going on. So some of the things that you'll see there is that, you know, first of all, there's this clear zone, as you can see here, is restricted to those properties that really are going to be directly involved in hosting some of these events, like the Galleria and the stadium itself, and some of the hotels and what have you in that area. It applies to activities requiring temporary permit or license for commercial vending, and also that it would allow for Major League Baseball, as the sponsor of these events, to install some signage, decals, stickers, banners, and plateables, those sorts of things for this limited time that typically we wouldn't allow, but this would give them some additional, you know, ability to erect those signages. But it would require written approval from the county. And of course, we'll be reviewing it for safety, making sure there's no issues with any kind of obstruction of right-of-ways and those sorts of things. And now we'll have Erica come to cover the transportation amendments, and then Judy will speak to water, and I'll be back with zoning.
Good evening, again, Chairwoman Cupin and Commissioners. The Department of Transportation has two sections in Chapter 106 for consideration. The first chapter or section is 106-3, which is the Utility Accommodations and Rides Away. This is really just a cleanup item. Georgia Department of Transportation's in 2018 adopted their 2016 Utilities Accommodations Manual. So this would be to adopt the newest version of that manual for protection of the county's rights of way as related to utilities. Our second section that we would like consideration on is in Article 7, Small Wireless Facilities. This is a, this code was adopted in September of 2019. We've determined that some additional clarification within the section has been determined to be needed, just to specify a process for handling damaged, destroyed, or decorative poles within the right-of-ways along the ownership of replacement poles. And the actual sections that need additional clarification are the Section 106, 181 definitions, and then 106, 186, which is the removal, relocation, and modification of small wireless facilities in the right-of-way.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then Judy.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The Water Systems' proposed amendments to Chapter 110 include clarifying that Platts for subdivisions being proposed for septic tanks require authorization from the water system before being submitted to the Health Department for approval. Also, cleaning up requirements to be consistent with current practices, and including a requirement to show easement setback requirements. We're also changing the septic tank requirements into reference Section 122, which have more detailed septic tank requirements, so that we don't have any duplications or conflicting requirements. In addition, we're correcting that overlapping drainage and sewer easements are to be approved by the water system. We also have amendments to Chapter 122 Utilities, and they include cleaning up the language to be consistent with our current practices, adding the definition of subdivision to clarify that our definition of subdivision in this chapter is the same as the definition in the subdivision, Chapter 110. We're also adding criminal penalty section, which is required by the federal pre-treatment requirements. This section was previously in the code. Not sure why it was deleted, but the federal requirements require us to have this in the code for our pre-treatment program. In addition, we're changing the wastewater lift station section to provide for the water system director to be able to provide a variance in very limited situations for a private pump station to pump across one property. And finally, we're adding a clarification to the wastewater lift station section to clarify that a private pump station serving more than one property is, must be approved by the EPD.
All right, our final chapter for amendment this evening is Chapter 134. This is the zoning chapter. And again, this was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their January meeting in accordance with our code, and some of these items will be coming back to the Planning Commission at their February meeting, which will be held next week. So that'll be prior to your next public hearing. The first section is for conservation subdivision accessory structures. Again, the CS district is no longer in the code. So what we're proposing is to bring approval of accessory structures in those districts that are still zoned, see the CS, in line with the closest residential zoning district, so that it would be Planning Commission approval rather than Board of Commissioners approval. The redevelopment overlay district, ROD, we're proposing that no new applications for ROD would be accepted after March 1st of 2021, so this year. We do have one application for ROD that's pending, so this application, of course, will continue through the process. But we are proposing to stop accepting applications, and in the future, as we look at updating our codes, to revisit this and see what can we do to really achieve the goals that were set forth when this ordinance was initially adopted. The Osteo Road Design Overlay District, of course, is already in place, the overlay. At this point, we are looking to codify that to give it the additional teeth and enforcement ability that would come with code versus the overlay, the design guidelines themselves. We're not at this point proposing any changes to the guidelines, but the Planning Commission did propose some very, and raise some very thoughtful questions and concerns, so we are taking a deeper look at that, and we'll be bringing that back to the Planning Commission next week for consideration. The sign ordinance, just like Erica mentioned with the wireless communications facilities, you know, this was adopted about the same time. There are a number of changes in that year, so that we've been implementing it, that we see things that we need to clean up to make it work a little bit better. So some of those are adding some additional definitions for banner, to differentiate between a banner versus a flag. Also, adding some additional signs that would be prohibited just across the board in the county, including signs with an easements or setbacks for water, sewer, or drainage, with the exception of if a variance is granted by the water director. Signs on trees, utility poles, rocks, or other natural features, pennants and streamers, those mechanical and wind-activated devices that you see sometimes, and also signs that just in general are not in good repair and need to be replaced. Non-conforming signs, again, this is just really clarifying that whenever we're speaking of signs that are legally non-conforming under the previous code, that this would include that the the square footage of those signs is, so to speak, grandfathered, and that those would be exempt from the requirements of the new code. This is another one that we'll be bringing back to the Planning Commission next week, commercially industrial zone properties, the limitations on wall signs. Currently, the code would limit those to just 49 square feet, which is really, doesn't quite meet the needs of many of our businesses, but the numbers that were proposed by staff, and again, proposed in line with the variances that have been granted by the Board of Zoning Appeals to this point, but the Planning Commission wanted to take another look at that and see if, you know, maybe there were some other maximums that they might be a little bit more comfortable with. So we'll be bringing that back to them next week. And also, non-residential uses on residential property. Again, this is a little language change that we'll be working on with the Planning Commission there, but just to clarify how sign areas calculated for, you know, apartments, subdivision signs, those sorts of things that are in those residentially zoned, or single-family residentially zoned, perhaps, districts. Temporary signs for commercially and industrial zone properties currently is 200 square feet, which again is a very large temporary sign, so staff is recommending to reduce that to 100 square feet. And again, that was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. And then finally, that, and the permit requirements, the application requirements for signs that for those freestanding signs, rather than requiring two copies of the plans as required currently by the code, we really only need one. So we're going to change that in the code, so that way we don't have to ask our businesses to invest in an additional set of plans. So that, those are all the planning, or all of the Code Amendments for this year that are being proposed. And what'll happen from here, of course, we will, we've gotten the feedback that you all provided this afternoon, of course, and I will have the public hearing this afternoon or this evening, there may be some other recommendations that come out of that, but we will update the draft Code Amendments package and bring that to you for your next meeting, and we'll include a cover sheet that bullets out so that you can see very easily, as well as the public can see very easily, what changes have been made between the two public hearings. And then that'll come forward for the February 9th meeting. At this point, I'm glad to answer any questions, and we would just ask that you would open the public hearing, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we open up the public hearing, do the Commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Burrell? I'm assuming she's okay.
No, you're not at this point.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'll make one.
Yes, Commissioner.
One comment. So regarding the noise request, I know that earlier in our work session, we discussed kind of a day-of-the-week consideration. I think we can extend that to also include zoning consideration as well, and we'll follow up on what that could mean, but depending on what the area is zoned for, what that could mean for the noise ordinance itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. With that, let's go ahead and open up our public hearing. If there are any who would like to speak, we can have an unlimited amount of speakers for three minutes each. And when you speak, please help us in providing your name. Even if we know your name.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
It's good to see you today. And my name is Dana Johnson. I'm with the Cobb Chamber of Commerce in select Cobb, and I'm here to give you a very brief overview of our opinions on your Code Amendments. And I know I've emailed this to all of you this afternoon or this morning. But in Chapter 6, the Chamber fully supports the changes to all of the alcoholic beverage ordinances, are very business-friendly policies, and we appreciate you considering all of these. Under Chapter 22 under Cable Communications, we also support your effort to streamline regulations and remove regulations that may not be necessary anymore. Under 78, licenses and permits, the Chamber fully and wholeheartedly supports an effort to allow for great tourism in Cobb County. This will go a long way. All the spotlight on the world will be on Cobb again, and it's great that we're going to have an opportunity to have a welcoming and open effort on that. So we fully support your efforts on that. Under zoning in Chapter 134, for the sign ordinance, this one's a little more difficult because we support it in concept. We think it's a good idea. We've heard from a lot of our small business owners that the sign restrictions are too... our small business owners that the sign restrictions are too strict, and that they would like to see it reduced some. I don't know if personally, if going to the extent that was in the original code is the right thing, so I think the Planning Commission's on a good track of trying to find a compromise between what's existing and what was proposed, and see if there's a medium ground that might be beneficial, where you can kind of continue to maintain your community standards by also allowing our small businesses to continue to prosper. Under the temporary, temporary signs, we're direction from 200 to 100 square feet, that will really hurt your small businesses by going to that large of a reduction, halving the amount that you could do. Just the word grand opening, if you're set back on a, in a strip mall and you're set back pretty far, I'm not going to use any roads, I don't want to put anyone on the spot, but there's many areas with large roads and large wireways, and then you're set back from the building itself, you try to put a grand opening sign there, and you're not going to be seen unless you can have it be large enough for, really to catch people's eye. So I would ask you to think about that, and you're, I know you're considering many different opinions on making these decisions, we just want to make sure that opinion is out there so that you consider that in your judgment of it. And lastly, under the ROD, the Chamber would recommend that there be some further study on this. We don't want to get involved in zoning cases and things of that nature. I know there's one that's currently being considered. We do think, though, there needs to be some type of redevelopment incentive for some of our aging strip centers to help areas of Cobb that need it. I'm not saying that what we have in place right now is the right thing for you, we just hope there's something that will come out of this that will allow us to help redevelop the areas that require it. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have of the Chamber's position. Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Thank you, appreciate it. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Ron Siphon, and I'm going to say, I think in agreement with what Dana just said, the only item I want to address is the sign ordinance. To me, going from a maximum of 49 square feet to either 150 under some circumstances or 200 under other circumstances, that's a massive difference. That's a massive change, and I'm just wondering if maybe the 49 needs to be adjusted, but it may not need to be adjusted by that much. So I would encourage finding a different number. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers tonight? This is particularly with respect to the code amendments, there'll be opportunity for public comment. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Tim Corrini, just wanted to make a comment on the ROD. As you all know, you've seen many, many emails from me. I just want to say thank you for considering halting future RODs, but also wanted to make a comment, it'd be great if we can consider putting in the stipulations for the Sandy Plains East Piedmont corridor into an actual ROD code if and when it gets revised in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers with respect to code amendments? With that, we'll call the public hearing closed. Thank you. Next, we're going to move into our next tab for public comments.
Thank you, Chair. The first speaker is Quantina Scott.
Thank you. And even though your name is shared, again, if you don't mind, please just, again, restating your name for us when you come up, and know that you have a maximum of five minutes.
Ms. Scott, there's a timer on the desk.
Good evening to all. My name is Quantina Scott. I last was here just before the first, the second matorium was getting ready to expire at the end of the year on December 31st, 2020. I had shared with you guys that, you know, Cobb County could potentially start to look like a third world. To update you guys on some things that's going on in the community, we haven't been able to see the third world yet due to some of the extensions with the mitoriums currently going on. However, there are some things still going on in the community. I would like to see a one application process in regards to rental assistance. That needs to be something simplified for a lot of the property managers, as well as some of the tenants who are applying, having to fill out two, three different type of applications, and even going through some of the agencies. If there is, if they're, if they're giving out government funding, that should be, the protocol should be one type of application going across the board for everybody, to just make it a little bit easier. Documentation that is needed to get into some of these programs, that needs to be shortened. I would probably advise to do ID. We're in a system right now where most of our ID has already recorded our social security, our birth certificate, we shouldn't have to provide that additional to get assistance. A passport, those are some things that I think should be provided, as well as a lease or a bill. SSI cards, I don't think should be needed, you know, for the whole household, just to get funding, that's a bit much. We're in a pandemic, these are emergency funds, and the funds need to get allocated to the people as soon as possible. Those are delays and additional systematic issues. Some people may need to double dip or to look into other resources, depending on how far they may be behind. Some people may be $7,000 behind on their rent and may have to go through Starz, or even Cobb Home Savers, or they may even have to go through both, or they may have to use Must Ministries, or even use Sweetwater. And people shouldn't be penalized for having to double dip. These are government funds, and if people can't have access to it, then they should have access to it to help alleviate their situations. Making the funding a lot more accessible, the process should be a little bit more speedy. These are unforeseen circumstances right now, so some of the organizations should not be putting people through a long vigorous process. This should be easy, quick, get the money to the people, get the money to the property owners, so in that way, things, people can move on. Shouldn't take two weeks, three weeks, the process should be a whole lot easier. Making the resources more known to people. A lot of the property owners and management companies, they don't even know about the resources, so they're filing evictions. They don't, that's not their job to find out resources for the tenants. Their job is to manage their property and make sure that the property is running efficiently. Their job is not to get online and look for resources to help tenants. So those things need to be easily accessible to people, it is not. Everybody can't get online, everybody doesn't have Wi-Fi, everybody doesn't have a computer, so we need to look into better ways to advertise assistance to be able to help people. Evictions, that process needs to be changed. Is a long-term solution? Those are things that are going to hinder people in the future from being able to rent, to be able to move forward. Why is it so hard to, it's harder for a person who's renting to be able to go back and rent, let alone a person who has a mortgage who's getting a loan from a bank? They can go back and rent, they can walk away from a home, and they can go find housing, but a person who's renting can't. They're, they're, they're put into, it's hardships for that person, and they're not even purchasing property. That needs to be reviewed and looked at. Rental prices need to be changed.
Ms. Scott, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Sorry.
Cynthia Johnson.
A lot of issues, I will email you.
Cynthia Johnson.
Thank you for your time.
I was just going to say that list.
Cynthia Johnson?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Love seeing you ladies. I'm here today, I want to just say, start out just in a positive note, we, I really appreciate you ladies, I really appreciate you responding when I really need you, so I want to start this out on a positive note, and I just hope that you guys don't take what I'm going to say to heart, but I got to speak my mind. I know that you guys received this email, but I'm going to block some of the information out, but I want the world to hear as well. It says, "I am a resident at Apartment Community in Ostella, Georgia. I applied for Cobb County Home Saver Program, and I was accepted. When I tried to get my ledger and paperwork completed by the apartment complex, I was told the program was not accepted by the apartment property owners. That program was giving Cobb County residents over $4,000 in relief towards rent for each family. Most churches are exhausted and funds have been exhausted. I live, I've lived here three years, I have been moved to a new apartment on October 5th after complaining about the smell of sewage and mold in my apartment since March. Then June 1st, I had a fly infestation. They came to spray every two weeks, and the flies never went away. I was not moved until October 5th. The entire time I was fighting flies and paying my rent on time, I fell behind in November after my new apartment flooded and currently only owe January. Cobb County Home Savers would have been a relief for me. Why a company so big like the apartment complex does not accept the program? Why was I tortured for almost five months and shown no mercy for not being even a month behind on rent? Cobb Home Saver was for Cobb resident elected for COVID. I qualify, I'm more than qualified. How come I cannot use this government-funded program in Cobb County that is for Cobb County? With that being said, I want to piggyback off of Ms. Richardson's thing. I believe you guys do have the safety of the people in mind, the health and safety of our constituents, your constituents must be our priority. We cannot continue to accept owners in our community to be allowed to operate and receive funds without holding them accountable. Over the last year, I have come to realize that our system is broken. First, we need to hire more code enforcement to accommodate the demand. It took over a month for someone to inspect my unit, therefore, the water intrusion was dried up. Second, the next inspection, the same inspector passed the inspection, although I had a large water stain on my ceiling. I want to piggyback off of what the community developer, I think Ms. Gwen, Jessica, said. There is a very, I think it's very important that the international code receives someone that has expertise in plumbing, because we know the source of the problem is water leaks and humidity. It's not about the mold, I know you guys do not address mold, but you have to address the source of the mold, and if the waters continue and these families are being affected, we are relying on you to step up and say, "Hold on, wait a minute, we have a contract with you guys, we're a partnership with you guys. What is going on? We cannot allow this to continue happening in our community. Cobb County, when I moved here 14 years ago, I would never move out of Cobb County, we're known as Snob Cobb, but I love it, I love it. I'm not going nowhere, you're not going to force me out. You might be trying to force me out of my home, but I'm a fighter, I'm going to fight back, and I'll fight for a purpose, not because I want to stir up any problems. I've lived here 14 years, never having late payments, I've never had any lease violations, I've never had anything. When I say me and my kids stay in the house, we've never been through this in my life, but I'm a fighter, I'm going to continue to fight, I'm going to continue to stand in front of you, and you can see I'm getting a little battered in my little speech, but I'm just going to continue to fight, not just for me, but my community. Thank you."
Thank you.
Debra Johnson?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioner, and good evening, Lady Commissioners. My name is Debra Johnson, and I'm here on behalf of my community. As Cynthia stated, there is some issues going on in a certain apartment complexes. To hear that people are applying for assistance and is not getting it is heartbreaking. People are being evicted, and people are being put out of their apartments for no cause of their own. So while I'm here facing the issues, confronting adversity challenges, I understand Marietta Housing Authority has an issue, housing standard states under the Housing Choice Voucher Section, that units must be free of mold and mildew. While the housing quality standard inspects all units, choice units, to ensure that units are decent, safe, and sanitary, according to the federal housing quality standards, no unit should be leased unless it meets these standards. People are in these units. Inspections are being passed with these issues of mold and mildew. It is not safe or healthy to the families. So I'm here today to ask you ladies, Commissioners, to please find a way, find a solution, even if we have to take Marietta Housing Authority back and run it as a county entity, that's what we have to do. I'm just here begging and pleading for our families not to add to the problem, but to make a solution for the issues that we are facing. That is all I have to say. I want to thank my District 4 Commissioner for pleading for our community to stay clean. I appreciate your efforts and what you're doing so far, and I appreciate all of you ladies. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Wayne Marsenko?
I have some handouts here, can I distribute those? They're all the same, one for each Commissioner. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Wayne Marsenko, and I'm a lifelong resident of this county, I've lived here my whole life, born and raised. I've owned property in this county since I was old enough to legally own property, but I'm here tonight on behalf of my business. My business has also been located here in this county for over 50 years. My brother and I joint own a small contracting firm, we have been at our current location right now for over 30 years over on Old 41 Highway. About a year back, a little over a year back, a very nice lady from the Cobb DOT came to speak to us, and they wanted to rebuild the bridge over the railroad tracks there on Old 41. They needed a construction easement to go down our driveway, and we were fine with issuing one to help them out. We put three very specific stipulations in that because it's very, very important that we can get in and out of our driveway with very heavy truck traffic with very low clearance, and you'll see those in that handout that I gave you. Up until about November, we were quite convinced they were going to fix our driveway, but I'll tell you a little sequence that went on. When we first saw, when we first got the plans about nine or 10 months ago, we looked at their layout for our driveway, told them we didn't think that would work, we weren't going to be able to, if they changed it in that way, we weren't going to be able to get out. Well, they said, "No problem, we'll redesign it." They did. They came back with a second design, we looked at it, same story. We said, "I don't think it's going to work." Well, they were quite confident, they're engineers after all, so they went ahead over a weekend, put the asphalt down, didn't put down the curb and gutter, paved it. Monday morning, we get, load up our loadboy, try to get out our driveway, and we cannot exit our own driveway onto Old 41. There's a, there's a vertical curve at the top, you see, and the, these loadboys are very, very long with low clearance. If it's too abrupt, you get stuck on the asphalt, you can't go. No problem, they couldn't believe it at that point, they wanted us, wanted to show us. So we set up another meeting, we got our loadboy stuck again so they could all see it, they wouldn't believe it, they couldn't believe it. They said, "We'll get our contractor's loadboy loaded up, and we'll show you how to get down that driveway." So they tried to get in the driveway, coming into our driveway from 41, and they got stuck with the trailer blocking the traffic. I know this sounds unbelievable, but it is. They redesigned it again, we got another design, the third one, same story. We said, "We don't think this is going to work." Well, this time, they're even more confident, they went ahead and put in all the curb and gutter, went ahead and paved it again over the weekend, and guess what, Monday morning, we tried it again, still could not get out. We're stuck, we absolutely cannot exit our own property at our own driveway with our own equipment right now. The only way we can get it in and out is to turn out the driveway on the bottom of our drive and cut across our neighbor's loading docks over there, basically trespass on our neighbor's property. Basically trespass on our neighbor's property is the only way we can get in and out. Up until about November, we thought they were gonna fix it. But in November, everything changed. And at this point, I have no confidence that the DOT has any intention of fixing our driveway. Their excuses are laughable. They say there are no design criteria for a driveway like ours for vertical curve design, which is just a joke. They say that fixing your driveway is impractical. They say, "How can we go before the Board of Commissioners and justify a change order to fix this problem?" And they say that, "Well, we don't believe you ever really drove out that driveway with that lowboy for over 30 years. You must have been going in a different way." And I cannot understand how our own, my own DOT, your DOT would do this to us. We just want a driveway we can use with our equipment, it's very, very important. They're taking a stand now as the driveway is improved, and they don't have to fix anything, and I don't think they're going to even try. This is a considerable cost to us, getting in and out every day. Sometimes the loading docks are blocked down there and we have to wait to get our equipment out. And it has, if we can't get lowboy traffic in and out of our property over there, it will severely decrease the value of our property. So at this point, I'm just asking you, please, we need somebody at the DOT to fix this problem. It can be fixed, it's not a big problem. The first driveway, I built it myself, it can be done. I could build that driveway right, so it would work. But we need an engineer who is focused on actually trying to fix the problem and not trying to make excuses because he's too scared to come up here and say, "I goofed up three times on my designs." And with that, I'm just asking you to please, if you want to reach out, if you want to have a meeting, I'll be glad to get out there on the site. There's nothing like seeing it right in front of your face, what's going on. We'll get our darn lowboy stuck as many times as it takes if we, if that's what it takes to get somebody to pay attention to this problem. We just want our driveway fixed. We're more than willing to work with the county, whatever it takes, we just want our driveway fixed so we can use it. We've been going in and out that driveway, as you see in that handout, 30 years. No problems until Cobb County came along and decided to improve our driveway. And that's why they're calling, they're saying it's an improvement, and we're not doing anything more. And that's their whole focus at this point. So if you have any more questions, you have any questions?
Ms. Marsenko, your time's up.
Thank you.
Davida Carter.
Good evening, Chairman, good evening Commissioners. Thank you for letting me speak again tonight. I'm here speaking again about the eviction moratorium in Cobb County. First of all, let me just tell you, I appreciate all you guys done in this community to help with the evictions. My husband worked at Home Depot Supply, HD Supply here in Cobb County. The whole job has been shut down since March 15th. We are going into a year almost now since his job has been shut down. Some of these jobs are not being opened back up, they are not coming back. So that leaves us in a very difficult financial position here in Cobb County, especially with affordable housing. Another thing I want to talk about, some of these programs that's out here. I have family members that are staying in an apartment complex, and I want to reiterate on about code enforcement here in Cobb that should go out to like Sierra Forest. I have three family members, which I'm not gonna name, because they couldn't be here because they're working two jobs, okay? To just even make it through this pandemic. Sierra Forest, one family member didn't have no HVAC unit from the time she moved in for seven months through the summer and the winter. Then when she had to go and get heaters to plug up, she couldn't plug up more than two electric heaters in the apartment to warm it for her and her children. Now, this apartment, they rented a unit without a HVAC unit. That should be against the law, that's number one. Number two, they have sewage, raw sewage coming up out of the apartment next door, coming up into their tub. This happened twice. That is a health hazard, especially during this pandemic. Another family member that stays out there had the electric stove blow up in his face. Thank God he wasn't injured. Half of that stove, they replaced it with another stove that the only top burners work. So the ovens, they had to use Thanksgiving, they used a catering service to cater their Thanksgiving because they couldn't cook their Thanksgiving dinner. The third family member has black mold in there. And these were stuff that they told this apartment about way before the pandemic, before, you know, April of last year, when this stuff happened. Another thing with Sierra Forest, with STARCE and Home Saver Program, they had people in this office that were working in the office, working on these applications for these tenants, and fired the people in the middle of the application. Now they're telling one of my family members, "Oh, you owe such and such." But they had this application in since STARCE started back, you know, several months ago. So I think that, you know, code enforcement needs to really check out those apartments. Some of them are, they're inhumane, the way they treat these tenants. We know that we're suffering through a pandemic that none of us seen, could foresee coming. But it's causing a lot of other things that's going on in the community. Now, we don't want to see a lot of our community end up homeless. This is gonna cause a pandemic of homelessness of epic proportions if something isn't done or, you know, as far as bringing back services, jobs, things in this community as far as programs that's gonna help homeowners and renters in Cobb County during this pandemic. We are suffering, you know. We just celebrated Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday, just, you know, recently. In 1968, when he was assassinated, Lyndon B. Johnson signed the 1968 Civil Rights Act. Now, that is also called the Fair Housing Act. There's nothing fair about this housing. There's nothing fair going on about these housings. We have federal protections that are in place, and they're getting millions of dollars for HUD every year for our communities that we are not seeing. We are not seeing. During this pandemic, I would like to see us work on getting some of these funds to put people in affordable housing in Cobb County. We love Cobb County. We love the great state of Georgia.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is run, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Y'all have a wonderful evening.
Do the same, thank you.
Sharon Hill.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I am Sharon J. Hill. Longtime resident of Cobb County, and I'm here as both an advocate for and with the people. I facilitate outreach at Zion Baptist Church. And while, yes, we have another arm that receives the grants, I facilitate the missionary assistance under the Deacon's Ministry, which is usually known as the Benevolence. And thus, that means just what people are able to give and how we manage that. Through the pandemic, I just want to stand here and, for all that have spoken on what this pandemic, what this time has brought forth, it has been spoken before that if, well, if people are having a hard time now, then maybe they were over their heads in the beginning. And that can be said for the health as well as housing, that we're dealing with the detriment of pre-existing issues like, yes, inequable housing and unfair low wages. And so, because that was already here, and yes, things are changing, and we thank you so very much for being a part of that and for making sure that these issues are addressed. I am just here to give you just the snapshots. You have, I know you have numbers, but we have to go just a little bit farther. And that is for what we receive in and with our partners. We partner with other churches so that we're able to actually help more people because we can't pay a thousand dollar rent. And so, from a Stonebridge Church, a Turner Chapel, Church of God, a First United Methodist partnering, we have been able to, as this was before. And so, as this past year has occurred, we have experienced what has gone on in Cobb and, of course, across this country. And true, yes, we know that there was a little help. But that was after people had been out of work for two, three months. Now it's almost a year. And while there were, and we speak about the jobs, small businesses, that is, we know the backbone of this country. How certain companies were not allowed to do as cleaning. Only the big ones got it. So that actually transcends. People, our trends show that when people received the money, they took care of business. And as things did not pick up and get back, the calls came, the intake came, more and more. From September to December, we received just online intake, 283. But at the same time, let us be real clear, there were 15 to 25 calls a day. A day. And so, as we partner even with our grant programming within UnderZion, at the same time, what is not known by the public is that there are guidelines and stipulations, as someone else mentioned, of what you need to have. And so, even that, people are moving, they lose things, they're put out, they lose things. And so, in picking up the pieces, it takes time. Yes, it should not take a month, two months, but guess what? It has. It has. And so now, in this last wave, between last Thursday, our days are Tuesdays and Thursdays, and our times are from 10:30 to 2:00 p.m. From 3:00 p.
Excuse me, ma'am, I'm sorry, your time is run. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, that concludes the first six speakers this evening.
Thank you. We will move to our next tab, which is our consent agenda. Our staff has had the list of items on consent agenda scrolling at the beginning of this meeting for 15 minutes, and will do so towards the end of the meeting. I do have one item to pull from the agenda, which, bear with me. Which is item number five, to adopt a resolution to approve the transit-related 2021 Title VI Program update for Cobb Link. Just to facilitate further review with anticipation, it will come back at the next DOC meeting. Bill, if you can help me understand if there needs to be a motion for that to be pulled, or?
That'd be easier, I'm sorry, that'd be easier for that to happen like that, sure.
I'm sorry, sir.
Yes, my understanding is, is that what Ms. Parrish wants to do?
Yes, I did, if she's here.
She's probably in the overflow for the social distancing.
Okay, do you want her to have a motion?
No, if y'all just, if you meant a motion, then just second it, that'd be fine.
Oh, okay, so yes, I move that we pull item number five. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
So Erica was in agreement with this?
Yes, I told her, yes. Are there any other questions? All in favor, if you may raise your hand. See four of us. Commissioner Burrow, if we can. Commissioner Burrow, can you speak and let us know if you're in favor?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
Thank you.
I'm sorry you couldn't see my hand.
It's okay, it's not your fault, we're just toggling between screens. Yeah, thank you.
I'm voting yes.
Thank you, ma'am. The motion passes 5-0, thank you. Also, again, don't forget, we've had the changes that were read to modify the agenda, to add the approved settlement of a worker's compensation claim as part of Agenda Item Number 49. So with that, I move that we approve the consent agendas, there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Uh, yes.
Yes, Commissioner.
I am opposed to item number 13, and I'd like to give some background since this does pertain to the Clerk's notes. Section 2.30 of the Cobb Code states that members of the commission shall be required to vote on any manner and have it duly recorded in the minutes of the meeting. This past year, we heard about voter suppression and lack of integrity of the vote cast. It is this board's responsibility to protect the integrity of government, and while this may seem trivial, the chair called the vote in favor but not opposed. All votes were not accounted for in a public manner, yet recorded as such. While I stand my objecting to the minutes as being recorded inaccurately, does not change the final outcome of the vote. If we are willing to ignore this, what will be next?
Thank you, Commissioner. We know we've had some discussion at this, at our agenda prep. I don't know if Commissioners want to discuss this item any further before we move forward with the motion. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Those in favor of approving the consent agenda, recognizing Commissioner Gambro's opposition to Agenda Item Number 13, may you please raise your hand? I'm sorry. I need, I just want to make sure I remember procedurally. Did we have a second? Yes, we had a second already that's on the floor. So those in favor, if you may, please raise your hand. Thank you. The consent agenda is approved with five Commissioners in favor and none opposed, recognizing Commissioner's opposition to, Commissioner Gambro's opposition to item number 13, and want to also recognize the consent agenda was revised, and the chair is authorized to execute any of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. Before we move on, just want to make sure that that was clear for the motion. Okay, thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to our next tab, which is the DOC Chair tab, which is item number 14. And I believe, oh, we have Deputy County Manager Jimmy Dacey here.
Good evening, Chairwoman and Commissioners.
Thank you.
We have, we have one item for you tonight. Fortunately, we have a tremendously positive relationship with our Cobb delegation at the Capitol. They seek our input, we provide that input. We don't always get everything we want, but we feel like they listen to us and they understand some of our top priorities. One of the things which we normally do is we prepare a legislative agenda with some of our big picture type issues, as well as some specifics that we would like for them to consider during the legislative session. In meeting with Chairwoman Cupid, she would like for us to establish, and staff agrees, establish a process by which we establish a process by which we have the input from staff, the input from, from the commissioners. We go ahead and have that agenda prepared, voted on ahead of time, and then presented to our Cobb delegation. Now, this past year was a little different in that we had a new composition of the board coming on, onboard in January, so we weren't able to, to meet all of our deadlines for this year. But we feel like it's going to lead to greater transparency as far as the issues that we would like to see pressed at the state Capitol, and we'll also be speaking with one voice as we talk to the delegation. So, a rough sketch outline of the, of the timeframe for our, for our agenda would be in September. We would start speaking with our department heads and agency directors and with commissioners to see what type of issues you would like to see on the legislative agenda for the following year. The BOC would then approve that legislative agenda in, at their first meeting in November, and then we would present it to the Cobb delegation at, hopefully, our Cobb delegation breakfast again, if we can all come back together again by the end of the year. This past, well, two, Friday was a week ago, we did have our virtual legislative brief with the, with the Cobb delegation. In, in an effort to have a legislative brief for them, Commissioner, Chairwoman Cupid and I sat down and went through some of the big-ticket items, some of the, some of the big-picture items, as well as some of the legislative-specific issues. And we put together the 2021 legislative brief. We talked about major policy areas, as well as some of the specific policy issues, which I believe you have that in front of you. So, we'd like for you as a board to adopt the process of creating this legislative agenda ahead of time, voting on it ahead of time, and then us presenting that to the delegation. Any questions?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I know we've had some discussion, you and I, one-on-one on this, and I, I noticed that the language was changed for the purpose in the recommendation, instead of "to consider", we're now "approving". And I, I don't have a problem with us approving items individually that, that may pass or may not pass, you know, depending on the vote, but I think to, to say that we approve an agenda and adopt the items on this list before they come back to us individually, I, I don't support that. But I do think it's a good idea for us to establish the policy to review these things and decide as a board collectively what we want to, you know, recommend to the legislature and what we want to support moving forward.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner.
I can't vote to approve, I can't vote to approve something when I don't know the funding, I don't know the specifics of each individual item.
Yes, and I can understand that. I think maybe some clarity may be needed, that these aren't necessarily approving anything specific at the state, but just providing our delegation some guidance that we are in support of matters that fall within these policy areas. So, anything that we support formally, typically by way of resolution, yes, as you provided, does come back to the board for an individual vote. Similar to when we met with the chamber and the delegation last year, December, and they provided their agenda to us, this is what we're doing, to provide our agenda to the delegation. We just wanted to have the Board of Commissioners know what was there and to approve it as a collective body, as opposed to having representation from the county via Jimmy or others go down to the state and advocating for policy without it being clear to all commissioners. So, I don't suspect that this contradicts where your interest is, but I know that it is a different way of moving forward, because in the past, we did not have that consensus before. We had representation go down to the Capitol.
Madam Chair, even to just adopt the process by which we go through this in, in the coming years would be a definite step in the right direction, so that staff will know, board will know, when the process will begin, what our end result, what our end goal is to be. That would be a good step.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson.
I have a question. Is it possible that this could be amended to say, approve the legislative brief, just for the consistency in the documents that we have here, so that there's no later, you know, reverse action to say, well, there was already approval in some agenda versus the brief? Not that I think anyone would do that, but-
Sure.
I see no issue with that. So, I see you looking this direction, Commissioner Sheffield. The attached document states it's a legislative brief, but the Agenda Item refers to it as a legislative agenda. So, just for consistency and semantics, you know, it's good to have both documents reflect the same thing in case somebody looks back from, you know, and sees that inconsistency. Thank you, Commissioner, for that suggestion.
And I'm hoping Commissioner Burl that can satisfy some of the apprehension with the approval, because then we're saying we're approving the general idea versus the concrete specifics of an Agenda Item. But I'm open to your thoughts.
Um, Madam Chair, could we-
Yes.
Could we say that we approve the process for supporting or adopting the legislative agenda for 2021 with the requirement, or whatever wording, language, maybe legal can help us out, that each, each subject matter or item would come back to the Board of Commissioners for a vote of approval?
Commissioner, again, the areas are broad, but what we can do is divide the motion. So, there are two things that are being asked as part of this motion. One is to approve the now legislative brief, and the second part is to adopt the practice of voting on policy measures. The legislative brief includes the policy measures, so they, they are related, but if that makes you feel more comfortable in adopting the practice, we are certainly at liberty, if you'd like to have a motion moved forward to divide the motion, we can vote on those separately.
Okay, well, we're, where you have to approve the legislative agenda for 2021 and adopt the practice of voting on policy measures prior to submitting to the state delegation. So, that, that would come back to the board, each item into each subject matter-
Again, impossible.
Or a full slate, or however we're going to do it. What's the policy?
Again, this brief is to share a general interest to the board, oh, excuse me, to the delegation. Any individual bill comes back before the board for consideration, if there is a bill that the state delegation asks for our support with. Sometimes they don't come to us, but sometimes they do come to us on matters that are specific.
Right. And there are things that we're going to submit, but we're going to vote on them first, correct? So, why can't we just add that language in there?
Madam Chair-
Yes, Jimmy.
Would it help if I gave that timeframe again, to where we started the process in September, the actual legislative agenda comes back to the Board of Commissioners for approval in their first, their first meeting in November? And then, once it's approved, it's shared with the delegation at our December breakfast or meeting?
It may, it may help provide some clarity.
But the list here is for this year, this current legislature in session.
Yes.
That's, this is 2021. He, he's talking about the future, next year.
Yes, ma'am, that, that-
To present everything before they go into session, and if we're going to do it from September to November.
Commissioner Burl, that was to adopt the process or adopt the practice part of that recommendation.
For clarity, for clarity's sake, I don't know if we'll be able to, you know, provide enough information to, to move where Commissioner Burl stands on this matter. But one thing we can do, because she is expressing support for the process, I believe she's expressing support for the process, and Commissioner Burl, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think it hurts for us to move to divide the motion. So, I move that we divide the motion between the legislative brief and for the adoption of the practice. Is there a second on, on that?
Second.
Right. Is there any discussion or questions? All in favor of dividing the motion, can I see a show of hands? Right, the motion passes 5-0. So, let's go ahead and start with the motion that Commissioner Burl is in support of, and I move that we adopt the practice of voting on policy measures prior to submitting them to the state delegation. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor, may you please raise your hand. That motion passes 5-0. The second motion is to approve the legislative brief for 2021. Is there a second?
Why not? Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions or further discussion? Commissioner Burl, taking your comments into consideration?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. All right. Those in favor, may you please raise your hand? Oh, okay, those in favor, may you raise your hand? Those opposed, may you please raise your hand? Okay, the motion passes 3-2 with Commissioners Gambrell and Burl in opposition.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for doing it that way.
You're welcome. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Next, we're going to move to our tab on transportation.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
Transportation has 13 items for consideration this afternoon. The first item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners consider to approve a contract with ABC Bus, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $4,577,158.26 for overhaul of the Cobb Link Express Bus Fleet, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chair to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor, may you raise your hand? Any opposed? The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Our second item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing submission of a transportation alternatives program grant application amendment to the Federal Transit Administration in an amount not to exceed $1 million for transit capital assistance to construct West Atlanta Street Trail, authorize its acceptance of allocated transportation alternative program grant funding, authorize the corresponding budget, budget transactions, and further authorize the chair or her designee to execute the necessary documents.
Yes, Commissioner Burl?
Yes, motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve supplemental agreement number four to the Cobb Framework Agreement with the Town Center Improvement District, Community Improvement District for additional engineering design of South Fair Parkway Reliever Phase Three, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chair to execute the necessary documents.
Yes, again, Commissioner Burl?
Yes, motion to approve. With pleasure.
Second. Any questions or discussion? Those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve Task Order Number One to the 2020 Master Task Order Contract with Cori Engineering Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $97,725 for site plan, design, and bidding services of the Southeast Hanger Site Project at Cobb County International Airport.
Commissioner Burl?
Motion to approve, again.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners authorize the sole source procurement of professional services from Cartograph Systems, LLC, in an amount not to exceed $46,350 for cartograph system upgrades and enhancements.
Thank you. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve Project Number X 2284 to the 2018 Countywide Unit Price Contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $24,915 for drainage system repairs on Willow Glen Drive.
Commissioner Richardson. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All right, the motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number Two Final to the Contract with NH Construction Company, Inc., as savings to the project in the amount of $49,085.57 for drainage system repairs on Lost Mountain Lane.
Yes. Commissioner Gambrell?
So moved.
Second? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve Project Number X 2752-T01 to the 2020 Master Task Order Contract with AECOM Technical Services, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $107,370 for preliminary engineering design for Davis Road Sidewalks.
Commissioner Burl?
Yes, motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve the construction agreement with CSX Transportation, Inc., in an amount, in an estimated total amount of $25,685 for the construction of West Atlanta Street Trail.
Commissioner Burl?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve Amendment Number One to the Cobb Framework Agreement with the City of Smyrna for the railroad flat zone improvements at Nica Jack Road.
Bear with me, I'm thumbing through the agreement. Yes, Commissioner Sheffield?
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? The motion passes, oh, excuse me, those in favor, I'm thrown off, may you please raise your hand? I'm seeing District Four, and I want to just jump in here, but I've got, let District Four go. All right, then, the motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve an intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement with the City of Smyrna regarding annual maintenance fees for railroad flat zone improvements at Nica Jack Road.
Thank you. Commissioner Sheffield?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, the motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve an agreement with Norfolk Southern Railway Company in a total estimated amount of $571,965 for railroad flat zone improvements at Nica Jack Road. for railroad flat zone improvements at Nica Jack Road.
Thank you. Commissioner Sheffield?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes five zero.
Thank you ma'am. And the last item for consideration is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve a change order number three to the Contract with Cooper and Company General Contractors Inc., a no-cost time extension through March thirty-first of 2021 for construction management at-risk construction services for the Cobb Link Bus Fueling Station and Bus Wash Facility renovations.
Yes, Commissioner Burrow?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor, may you raise your hand? And the motion passes five zero. Thank you, Erica.
Thank you ma'am.
With that, we are gonna move into our next tab, which are appointments of District Four. I know during our work session, I asked if we can do some of them in bank, just do what makes you feel comfortable.
Sure.
If we need to go through these one by one, we'll do that. If you want to announce any of them together, we can do that as well. It's completely up to you. We ready?
Yes.
I make a motion to reappoint Ollie Davis to the Public Library Board. And now-
Oh, sorry.
So, and yes. Any discussion? I'll discuss, the approvals will have to go before the Board for a vote. The announcements, you can just simply announce and so-
Right.
Yes, so-
Okay.
That's why we had to have the second there.
Okay.
All those in favor, may you please raise your hand? The motion passes five zero. Alright, we'll go to the next one. Let's just do these one by one.
Uh, you sure? Um, okay. I will, now I'll make an announcement to reappoint Galt Porter to the Planning Commission. Wayne Blackstone and Toby Carmichael to the Animal Services Board. And that is a joint, Wayne Blackstone is a joint appointment with District Two, Commissioner Richardson. Geraldine Savage and Marta Stewart to, I'm sorry, Geraldine, Geraldine Savage to the Historic Preservation Commission. Marta Stewart to the Home Builders Advisory. Harvey Williams, Jeff Paget, Barry Krebs, all to keep Cobb beautiful. Lindsay Edward and Roger, Roger Sandboff to the One Percent Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax Citizens Oversight Committee. Danya Aponte and Allison Biggers to the Transit System Advisory Board. And that is it for my-
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Next, we'll move to the tab of appointments for District Two.
Move to approve the reappointment of Abby Schiffman to the Public Library Board of Trustees.
Yes, and that's item number forty-two. I'll second that. Is there any discussion?
Item number forty-one.
Forty-one, but yeah.
Okay, I have heard differently. It was just listed differently on the screen, forty-one for approval, yes. Is there any discussion? Was there a second on that one?
Oh, sorry.
Let's make sure there's a second. She has-
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Okay. Alright, any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, the motion passes five zero, and now to item forty-two.
Alright, announcements. Um, so I'm announcing the reappointment of Bryant McDaniel to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Announcing the appointment of Daniel Madelon to the Neighborhood Safety Commission. Uh, the appointment of Bill De St. Avin, Felicia McDade, Anne Jacque Lepedetapour to the One Percent Special Purpose Option Sales Tax Citizens Oversight Committee or Sblos Oversight. And I believe that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I've seen, I've got my numbers off. You did read it correctly, so we did start off with forty-one. And the next tab is for the B O C Chair. I would like to announce the reappointment of Commissioner Joanne Burrow to the Airport Advisory Post One position. And also announce the appointment of Commissioner Monique Sheffield as Vice Chair for 2021. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to our next tab of public comment.
Thank you Chair. First, uh, Speaker in the last section of the public comment this evening is Ashley Jones.
Excuse me, um, let me confer with our county attorney.
The list, the list is full.
The list is full, so there's a maximum of six slots, ma'am, and those have all been taken for the second public comment.
Okay, so I need to come back next month? Or, cause I, I've contacted-
Excuse me, this is, this is probably not within protocol, but if, um, I can have a staff member speak to the woman in the back to see if there's a matter that we can assist her with outside of public comment? Thank you.
Okay. Hey, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Ashley.
Yes, Ashley, what's your last name, Ash?
Jones. My name is Ashley Jones.
Okay, thank you.
I've lived in Austell my whole entire life. And the main point that I wanted to bring to your attention today was the strict stipulations that I put on the rental assistance program right now. From my experience, um, about three months ago, I didn't even know about rental assist, rental assistance. Someone had to actually bring it to my attention, and without that person, I probably would have got evicted. Um, also, I did receive assistance, but it was only for that one month. So we fast forward three months ahead of time and I tried to apply again for assistance and I was denied. And it was brought to my attention that there was over forty-eight hundred, I believe, for each household. There was millions that's been given out to, um, different organizations to help people, so I'm not sure why I was denied. And then also coming from a single parent's perspective, with our kids in the schools, there's teachers that are passing away. There's students, there's a new strain that's affecting kids. So it's like we have to choose between letting our kids go to school and potentially getting sick or that's really the only choice we have at this point. Um, and then some people may argue, well, there's unemployment benefits that are given. But if you calculate it, we would have to save all of our unemployment just to pay for one month of rent. That's not including bills or anything else that our child might need. Um, let's see what else I have here. That's really, that's mostly what I wanted to bring to you guys' attention. Um, I don't even understand why teachers are still having to teach. Because the first day my daughter, I attempted to let her go to school this second semester. Um, the first day she told me that there's a student that didn't have a mask and didn't feel well. The teacher did not give the student a mask. So to me, that feels, to me, that just seems like they don't care about our, our teachers or our kids at this point. So I don't even see why virtual learning isn't for everyone until this is going, until this is over. Because the pandemic, even though the, I don't know how to explain it, but even though it's going down a little bit, it's still high and people are still dying. And we have people who have pre-existing, um, health conditions who are not elder, but they still have health conditions where if they were to catch COVID, they could pass away. And so I have to think about my child and my family that's in my household as well. So I really did wanna bring that to y'all's attention. It's just really hard for rental assistance. Um, even to get in touch with someone when I got the letter, when I got the message that I was denied. So just maybe if you guys can make it a little bit easier for people to apply and get accepted because it's the stress of our kids getting sick, we might get evicted. People are losing their jobs and it's hard to find jobs that work around your child's school schedule. So that's really the only thing I had to say.
Thank you.
Uh, Denny Wilson?
Uh, good evening, Madam Chair and Board of Commissioners. My name is Denny Wilson. And I come to you today, come before you today because I've got some issues with a county drainage ditch that runs along the front of my property. Uh, myself and two neighbors on each side of me, uh, we all share this ditch. In October of last year, you know, we were hit by the hurricane and it caused a lot of damage in Cobb County. Trees were down, power lines were down. Um, and I reached out in November to Cobb DOT, to Erica Parrish to get some assistance to cleaning this ditch. Um, because it's a storm, it's a stormwater ditch. Um, I've only reached out to them a couple of times because I've been keeping it clean myself. And I'll show you. First diagram. On this first diagram, if you look at the one on the left, uh, where the mailbox is, that's the drainage ditch. And it's covered, so you can't even see the drain. The picture in the middle is where I've started to clean it out. And the one on the end is where it's totally clean so that the water can flow through. Um, when that ditch is not cleaned and the water can't flow, it backs up into the street and it causes a huge puddle. And when cars come down the street, they're either slipping and sliding, uh, because of the amount of water. This next diagram is the ditch on the other side, which is my neighbor's. Now, I've already cleaned my side, but as you can see, coming from my side to their side, the ditch is all stopped up. So the water can't drain over there, um, until they clean their side. Now Erica Perry sent me back an email and said that in the past DOT has helped remove debris from the open channel ditches along your property frontage. Unfortunately, DOT is unable to address this request moving forward, unable to address it. As the department does not have the staffing or funding to consistently maintain open ditches and driveway pipes throughout Cobb County. The only time I've ever asked DOT to clean these, the ditch, is when, as I showed you, when it stops up to where the water can't flow. So what I did, I invested in a nine hundred dollar steel blower that has a long, um, tunnel that I can stick through there, um, to, um, blow the leaves to the other side so that it can be cleaned. Now this is from the Cobb G I S map. If you look at where fifty-six is my property, if you look at where my property line ends, right down below it, that's that ditch. That's county right of way. It is not my property. And I've only asked them really twice to come out and to clean this ditch. And for her to say that they don't have the funding, I mean, what is my property taxes going for? We're unincorporated Cobb. We don't even get trash service. We have to pay for trash. So I'm trying to figure out, why are we made to pay property taxes when she's telling me that they don't have the funding to clean right of way that belongs to the county? This next picture is what our streets look like. Um, this is, this is, this is how, what we have to drive on every day. That's one picture. Here's another. That's where somebody tried to patch it, but it still has a big puddle over on the side. Here's another, and this is on a sidewalk where, thank God, the pandemic is going on right now because this is right down the street from a elementary school where kids have to walk to school. Um, and this is the trash, uh, debris that people come down the street and just throw out. That's also right of way that belongs to DOT. And this is the last one, and that's other patchwork that they've done. This is the condition of our community, and this should be unacceptable. I mean, because I know that our homes are not valued as much as the homes in East Cobb and West Cobb, but the mileage rate is the same all across the county. And we all pay the same amount, so all I'm asking is that we get the same type of service that other people are getting in other parts of, of Cobb.
Ms. Wilson, your, Ms. Wilson, your time's up.
Thank you.
DA King? Excuse me, I'm sorry, Monica Delancey. I, I am so sorry, Monica.
Set my pause. You should, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Good evening. Monica Delancey, Riverside Community, Austell, Georgia. I'm here, um, just to reiterate some of the comments that were made tonight, especially about housing and rental assistance. Um, if you didn't notice, everyone that spoke tonight about housing and rental assistance were black female. Black females were at the top of the list, being evicted from their homes prior to the pandemic. Prior to the pandemic, Cobb County Master Court was wall-to-wall with black women, black families, Latino families. So we have been in this pandemic long before the virus came about to this country in 2020. So what 2020 has revealed to us, that even though these rental assistance is coming down, even though the homeowner assistance is coming, it still is only gonna be a short-term solution. And so we need to make it a priority to make sure that we have long-term solutions in place so that we don't go back to a normal it was before the pandemic, when you couldn't even have a seat in the Master Court because there were a hundred fifty people in the Master Court waiting to be heard from, by the judge on a Friday morning at nine o'clock, and again at one-thirty P M. So that would not be our, our normal again, and we would not go back to that. So when you talk about your priorities for the county, please make sure that housing, housing that people can afford, not based on the AMI, but based on the fact that your essential workers, your essential workers, which makes up a majority, a huge population of Cobb County, um, pretty much have to work two or three jobs to maintain. And you have those numbers based on the fact that Cobb County Public School System have roughly a hundred, um, thousand kids enrolled. And forty-five percent of children receive free reduced lunch before the pandemic, before the lost job, jobs. So therefore, the forecast is to embrace the fact that we're gonna have people here in Cobb County of, of all levels, all income levels, and we need to make sure that when these kids matriculate through the school system and when they graduate, they have a home to come back to. Okay? Another thing I want to reiterate is please, um, look at your, your rental guidelines and understand that the rental system guidelines, some people are being left out. Some people are, you know, I had to meet with somebody tonight to help them do the application because they couldn't just do it from their phone. So I told him, I said, you meet me here tonight, I'll help you with the application. I got an email this morning from a, one of our, um, a church, from a church stating that there's a man that's sixty-two years old, that he's been paying four hundred and fifty dollars rent, okay? And his landlord is not renewing his lease. He wants to know where he can move to for four hundred and fifty dollars a month in Cobb County. I said, good luck with that. But I will try to help you get on the list with Maryland Housing Authority because you are sixty-two years of age, so maybe that will, well, well, maybe that will help you out. So I have another call with him tomorrow. Um, I spend a lot of my time going to different apartment complexes, telling them about resources, telling the managers about resources, and helping the managers navigate through the, through the different types of resources that's out there. So again, I want us to be intentional. I want us to be purposeful to making sure that we have long-term solutions beyond twenty twenty-one because the jobs are not gonna come back, uh, and even if they do come back, will they come back so the person can, um, pay their rent? And then Sierra Forest, let me just go to that because it just, it, I mean, I, I went to the Maryland Housing Authority meeting last week about Sierra Forest. Sierra Forest has roughly about two hundred apartments there. And forty percent of their apartments receive Section Eight funds. That means every month they're getting at least forty, forty thousand dollars, not including the people that's paying market rate rent. So when you think about, uh, apartment complexes getting forty thousand dollars, they should have money for maintenance and other type of issues. And the reason why we have to say something about Sierra Forest, because eventually, when a person has eviction on their credit or if they have some type of issues where their income is not matching up, if not Sierra Forest, but apartments like Sierra Forest, that people go move in- if not Sierra Forest, but apartments like Sierra Forest, that people go move into, because they're just thankful to have a roof over their heads. And then two or three months later, that's when they see all the issues. And, 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 and that's why I have to go back to Sierra Forest, because it's, a lot of old apartments are in the South Cobb, of, South Cobb area. Okay? Well, thank you for your time.
DA King.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Chair and members of the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, my name is DA King. I've lived in Cobb County since 1983. I am here as president of a nonprofit group called the Dustin Inman Society. We are pro-enforcement on American immigration laws. My adopted sister is an immigrant. We have immigrants who support us and on our board of advisors. I am here tonight for multiple reasons, least of which not being that. I want to deliver a message from my friend Kathy Inman. Kathy Inman is the mom of Dustin Inman, for whom our group is named. Dustin Inman is forever 16, because an illegal alien, a non-citizen in this country illegally, was released three separate times by local law enforcement before the day he finally ran into the back of the Inman family car and killed Dustin. That crash also put Kathy in a wheelchair for the rest of her life. That was the year 2000. I am here to support and defend police officers who have been accused of profiling in the local press. My grandfather was a Detroit Police Officer, Detroit Police Academy Class of 1928. And like most Americans, I do not take kindly to anyone smearing police officers, especially a public official in law enforcement. I am here, which, put that overhead, please. I am here because I know there's a lot of, of public officials who have not just supported, but publicly praised the effort for the sheriff to get rid of the 287G program. I am fully aware that the 287G decision on the part of the sheriff does not have anything to do with this board. It does now that I have seen public praise for that decision. I want to make something clear to the entire room, something the media has been concealing, despite my personal best efforts, is that whether or not 287G exists in Cobb County or any other jail in this country, there is a state law in place that I helped produce in 2006 and modify in 2011. Take that down now. There's a state law in place that requires all jailers in the state to determine immigration status and report illegal aliens to the Department of Homeland Security. So however related somebody might be, that 287G is gone, I want to make it clear as best I can that nothing should change if our law enforcement who run the jail are, is in compliance with state law. And I want to give my personal pledge that I will do everything I know how to do to monitor compliance and do anything I can to make sure that there is some kind of sanction for non-compliance. I want to defend immigrants like my adopted sister, because constantly in the press and in public statements from elected officials, illegal aliens are referred to as immigrants. I resent that. So do my immigrant friends. Immigrants are not people who need to worry about deportation. That belongs to the label of illegal aliens. Nobody has ever been deported for a traffic offense, a broken taillight, or driving without a license. The sole reason for removal from the United States is violation of our immigration laws. I heard a lot of talk tonight from some very excellent present, presenters about the problem of jobs, wages, and rent money. There is nothing about immigration enforcement that cannot help all of those topics. People here illegally are taking American jobs and they're lowering American wages. And however much people don't want to hear that, it's still true. My name is DA King. I will be back. And I beg of you to make sure you know what you are talking about when you support losing a tool for enforcement on immigration. Thank you very much.
Patricia Furr.
Hello. Hello Chairman, Commissioners, hello. Uh, my name is Patricia Furr. Uh, we own, my parents and I own property on Wanda Circle in Marietta. And, uh, we've had a, a great life there, growing up. Um, it was wonderful. Until, uh, as of late, um, there's two landfills behind our house. Um, they're owned, the, the landfills are ran by a company called TAGS, T-A-G-S. And the, but the property is owned by Cobb County. Uh, the property, um, that, that I'm, that I'm having a problem with is directly behind us is a vegetative landfill. They, um, take not only Cobb County's yard waste, but they take everybody's yard waste, I guess. And they, um, they have, um, chippers, grinders. Uh, they sell compost, I think it's like 130 truckloads a week. Um, they sell mulch. Um, they take, uh, big trees to have paper made out of, I guess. That's where they're taking them, so. Um, but they're doing really well. They're doing really well. They're really busy. Uh, but the thing is, is that my mom has asthma. And you might be saying, well, why are you bringing this up now? My mom has asthma, so her last, the last time she had a major, major attack, she was ambulatory to, to the doctors. They gave her medicine and gave her shots and gave her breathing treatments. And, um, he told me then, he said, you need to be aware of the air, the quality of air she's breathing. Well, lately, they just started making compost, I think. I don't think they've been doing that for a long time, but for some reason, we're smelling it really bad now. And, um, there's smoke coming up from the mounds of, out there and, uh, all day, all night. You can ride by there, there's smoke coming up. Uh, the debris is all over the house. It looks like black mold. It's all over all the houses. And, um, it's just like nobody really cares. They don't have to have, they've, the county has exempt that property from having to have any permits. And I just feel like that with it being landfills, you would want to know what was going in there. Especially if you're 150 feet only from, from the landfill. They bought their, my parents bought the house in 1960. The county purchased their land in 1973. There's been no transparency about anything going on back there. The only thing that we were ever told was, uh, several years ago, may, maybe longer than that, they, um, set off dynamite down there. They did blasting, for some reason. And they came around and told, they didn't ask us or ask our opinion, they just told us that's what they were doing. Well, um, that circle needs help. And it just, they, it just looks like we're part of all of that. And we're, we're feeling part, like we're part of it. So I'm asking for you guys to maybe come out to the house one day. And don't tell anybody you're coming, because the machines will probably be cut off when they see people up there. But you come and stand in my backyard for 15 minutes and, and, and see if you wouldn't want some response and some help. For our homes are devaluating by the day. When they bought their house, there was 114,000 people in Cobb County population. Now it's, it's like 700 and something thousand people. That's a big difference. And, and that's a lot of trash. And that's a lot of, lot of trash and stuff. So I'm just asking for your help to, um, look into it. Uh, try to help find a way to, for these people, you know, if, if and when they decide to sell their homes, if they're ever going to be worth anything, because the bigger the county gets, the worse off we are. And I know Keep Cobb Beautiful has this big, you know, have these big events and everything, and we're over there. And we're like, hey, over here, uh, we're not beautiful. Um, you know, and those people around there have worked, there's about five of them left, five houses left, where the people bought the houses before 1973. And they've worked hard their whole life for those houses, and that's been their homes. My parents are 83. They've raised five children there. They don't want to live, leave there, but my mom can't breathe. So I'm just asking for some help, and I'd appreciate it if you would look into it, because I've, you know, you know, I have been here, this is my second time I've spoke, but I have email, 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 email. And the last email of, from my district manager, I, I never did get a response from that, but, um, I would just, I just feel like I'm being bounced around, you know? So, um, I appreciate your time. Thank you very much, and y'all have a good evening.
Ron Siphon.
Good evening, Commissioner, oh, sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Ron Siphon. And I have two transportation issues that I would like to address tonight. I know you've got your retreat coming up, and, and both of these may come up. So, um, a couple of years ago, after the state legislature, uh, approved HB 930 to allow a transit, each county to do a transit, um, uh, referendum on the ballot. And a few years earlier, they had done HB 170, which allowed a transportation referendum that would be primarily for roads. Cobb County, um, after that decided, and so Cobb County is authorized to put up to a 1% tax on the ballot for, uh, voters to approve or not approve. So Cobb County, the Board of Commissioners very wisely decided, well, we need to, just as a starting point, and the discussion can go on and things may change, but just as a starting point, we need to get a sense of what the, the citizens of Cobb County want and what they don't want. So, um, Cobb County did a very large survey. And, um, as a result of that survey and maybe other factors, the county decided, not necessarily locked in, but to pursue roughly a half percent for roads and a half percent for, for transit, and plan that out for the 2022 ballot. And I thought that was a very good plan. And while there are many reasons, one of the most important reasons is on the slide that I'm putting up, that is one of the pages from the Transit Tax Survey. And what, what the citizens of Cobb County told us is 22% of the citizens wanted the money spent on roads only. There, the, first of all, the survey identified people are willing to invest in improving mobility in Cobb County. 22% wanted all of the money spent on roads only. 11% wanted all of the money spent on transit only. And 57% wanted the money spent on a combination of roads and transit. I would ask y'all to, and I'm going to leave this slide. I'm sorry, I didn't make five copies for everybody, but y'all can make copies. Um, but key, think about what happened in Gwinnett County over the last two years. They put a referendum on the ballot, um, that on a special election, that the real problem was voters decided this doesn't adequately address what we believe the mobility issues are in Gwinnett County. And they voted it down. And then they, they took the, basically the same referendum, put it on the general election ballot a couple of months ago. Voted it down again. Because what the Gwinnett County Commissioners decided is they had a political agenda, they had an economic agenda, and they didn't care about the input that they were receiving from the citizens of Gwinnett County, that what they wanted to invest in, what the citizens wanted to invest in, was improving mobility in Gwinnett County. And the citizens decided they weren't going to accept a referendum that did not adequately address that. Cobb County has the opportunity to put together a referendum with some great transit projects, with some great roads projects, listen to what the citizens told us in that survey, put together a, a referendum, or two referendums, if it has to be that way, that match up with what the citizens of Cobb County have told us they want. And I believe that that referendum will pass easily. So the other issue that I wanted to address tonight is there's a, there was a study that was done a couple of years ago that was paid for by all the cities and CIDs between Smyrna and Northlake, uh, near the intersection of interchange of, of where La Vista Road crosses I-285.
I'm sorry, your time is running.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'll send you an email on, on the other issue. Thank you.
Chair, that concludes the second portion of the public comment tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I believe that takes us to the Commissioner's address. We'll go ahead and start with Commissioner District One, Commissioner Gamble.
Thank you. I'm pleased to announce that we've had our grand opening of Station 17, which was on January 21st of 2021, under Fire Chief William T. Johnson. Um, unfortunately, we were not able to open this up to the public, uh, due to the pandemic, but, um, hopefully we'll be able to do that sometime this spring. Um, I was able to tour the facility, and I will say, well done. Next, we have our Cobb Senior Services. We'll hold a drive-up service for Cobb residents aged 60 and over to get shelf-stable food on the following Fridays. It'll be this Friday, January 29th, February 12th, and then also February 26th from 11 to 12, or while supplies last. You will need a valid ID showing your date of birth and a Cobb County home address for each senior is required. No appointments are needed. The address for this food, um, drive is Cobb Senior Services, 1150 Powder Spring Street, Marietta, Georgia. And of course, in order for our drive-through to be a success. Oh, okay, I thought there was another one. I'm sorry. Um, in order for our drive-up to be a success, we are looking for donations. Um, Cobb Senior Services staff is currently accepting donations by appointment only. Please do not leave items outside. You can call 770-528-2009 to schedule a time for drop-off. Or if you'd like to make a financial donation, you can click donate at cobseniors.org. And last. There we go. Um, Cobb residents have a new direct line of communication for reporting issues and concerns to Cobb Department of Transportation and Park Staff. Uh, the See Click Fix makes it easy to provide the essential information crews need to respond to concerns using their smartphone applications or online tools. Once submitted, residents' concerns are instantly routed to the appropriate staff, and the user receives an email acknowledging the service request and follow-up email once the work is complete or the issue has been resolved. We do have a short one-minute video to show this.
Through a community powered by See Click Fix. Here, internal operations are streamlined with more intuitive, secure workflows and communications. Here, let me show you how it all works. See Click Fix organizes, tracks, and manages service requests from everyday citizens through a single application. When they see a problem, a few clicks. When they see a problem, a few clicks is all it takes to send off a service request. From there, the right people get the request and get to work. All communication and task management is seamlessly coordinated through the app. Citizens can see the work being done, and even receive a follow-up message when the work is completed. It's a team effort all around, and you have the data you need to make better decisions. Cities large and small use See Click Fix to accomplish more for their citizens with the staff, time, and budget they've already got. Get started today.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have Commissioner Richardson.
So I'll keep my comments brief this time as well. But basically, just want to make sure that everyone's aware I do have the applications going out for our board appointments. That will conclude January 29th. So if you are interested in serving on a board, please apply and schedule your interview for this week so that we can conclude that and you can be considered as a potential appointee. Also, wanted to say congratulations to the new appointments, the new announcements so far. We have another round that's coming next month. And so that'll include some of the ones that we had confirmed up from the first round. And some of them are just going through a transition phase. And of course, the new set for round two after this set of applications. Also, wanted to just put a note out about the bookmobile. We did mention this in our newsletter as well, as a service with the libraries. So please feel free to engage with them. That's a great service. Wanted to also announce, which I know the Commissioners share, and receiving a lot of emails on this topic, but for zoning case D-72 with regards to the Johnson Ferry Schalifer Development, we have decided we're going to hold a town hall on that to address some of the open questions and items. So please register for that town hall. I think we are nearing about 60 registrants, 60 attendees for that so far, and the number keeps growing. So please reserve your spot. That will be February 4th. So you have some time to get your, to sign up for that. And then lastly, I do want to encourage organizations, HOAs, nonprofits within District Two, to please sign up your organization to be a stop for the Priorities Tour. So I have shared with some members of our county my 14 priorities, but the idea is that I would like to tour the district here from our community. It's my opportunity to share with you those 14 priorities and receive feedback from you so that we can amend, we can edit, we can, you know, agree on things, so that at the end of the tour, I can actually present District Two's priorities, not just my priorities. So please sign up. If you are curious about that, you're welcome to email the office, and we'll make sure that we get your tour stops scheduled. Thank you for those that have already taken advantage of those opportunities. And that concludes my announcements. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sheffield?
Yes, thank you. Actually, before I get started, I just wanted to thank you, Chairwoman, for appointing me as the Vice Chair of this fantastic Board of Commissioners. And it is my promise and commitment to exercise good stewardship over that appointment. So as I move on to District Four, our golden nuggets, we'd like to thank our teachers and essential workers. That was echoed earlier today with Dr. Memark's presentation and Commissioner Richardson and Burrell. So again, we thank you guys for keeping our children educated and for keeping our community safe. And as far as our board appointments, we have received an overwhelming response to our application process. And we will have virtual interviews scheduled next week and look forward to appointing new people to, to, to the vacant boards no later than March. Also, community service. Our community service continues. Last month, I made an appeal for the residents of District Four to pitch in to, to eliminate litter. Well, that, that plea resonated throughout the county, and there were a lot of cleanup efforts, so I'm very grateful for that. And this past weekend, we had Deborah Johnson, who is no longer here. She was here earlier today, but she led the, through our Stella Community Task Force, 17 bags of litter, mattresses, tires, construction debris. And this is on the heels of my, of my efforts of picking up, I want to say we had like nearly 50 bags. And this is just one week later, and we're still finding this type of litter. It's very, very disheartening. And also, a special thanks to the Earth Warriors, who has a Adopt a Mile in Mabelton. And that was led by Linda and Ben Bracken. And also, in speaking of the Brackens, we are very excited that they are on, they are planning to open a restaurant in Mabelton. And it's going to be a very eclectic place. I had the pleasure of meeting with them over the weekend, and we just need to get through some permitting issues. But they're planning a live band, some really good coffee, brick oven pizza, specialty ice cream. So we're really excited about, about them opening their business in the community. So I ask that you guys stay tuned to that. And I thought it was one other thing, but it escapes me right now. So I will just conclude right there.
Thank you. And I'm remiss because you are not present with us, Commissioner Burrell, then.
I actually do have it. I'm sorry. I don't know how I can forget it.
Before I go to you, Commissioner Burrell, Commissioner Sheffield has one more announcement.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, Judy. So Commissioner Cupid in District Four, she has held monthly zoning meetings in our community. And I am going to continue in that vein because it's very helpful to keep the community engaged in what we're doing as it relates to zoning. And Galt Porter, who's on our Planning Commission, and he's also the Chair of the Planning Commission, he will host that meeting tomorrow along with, with Deidra. So if you all are interested in attending that meeting, I ask that you call the office and contact Deidra, and she will supply you with the link to tomorrow's meeting. That's it.
Thank you, and appreciate you continuing those meetings. They're quite constructive. Commissioner Burrell, I apologize. Please, go ahead.
No, no worries. You're fine. Thank you. And thank you for reappointing me to the Airport Advisory Board. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I would like to express our condolences to the family of Judy Williams. We lost a great public servant and a true friend with Judy. She started with the county in the, as a planner in community development in 1972. She was Sam Olens' first commissioner when he was the District Three Commissioner. And she retired in 2000, after 28 years of service to the county. And after that, she decided she wasn't tired of working for the county. And she joined the Planning Commission in 2001 and the BZA in 2002. And she has been serving on both those boards since that time. She was my Planning Commissioner and Board of Zoning Appeals member for the last four years. She was my rock. I depended on Judy so much. She was a great friend outside of zoning, but she is, was definitely a huge support to me. We're going to miss her. She lost her life to COVID. So please be careful out there. It is serious, and it does cost lives. And unfortunately, we lost Judy. So her funeral service is this Thursday at 2:00 at Maze Ward Funeral Home, Maze Ward's Dobbins Funeral Home on Church Street, just off the square. The, it is going to be family. And because of COVID and the restrictions on the number of people, but it is going to be livestreamed on the MazeWardDobbins.com website, 2:00 Thursday, if you'd like to livestream. So please keep her family, her son Keith, and her family in your prayers. And we're going to miss Judy. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We've had a few more pet adoptions for our veterans. On the right, let's see, you're, on the right side of the screen, Army Veteran Joseph Wintera has a new addition to his family in this beautiful black lab. He served 12, 12 years in the Army, and we appreciate his service to our country. On the left side is Bolt, a nine-month-old Pooh Box. Found, he's found his forever home with Jason Rodriguez after just 45 minutes in the shelter. Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, for four years of service in the U.S. Navy and for supporting our program. On the white is Sox the cat. And he was adopted by Air Force veteran Alan Essex. We, we thank Mr. Essex for 22 years of service in the Air Force. And left is Stephen and his son heading home with their beautiful black and white female Stafford. Mr. Hyten served four years of service in the military. And that puts our adoptions for the Superior Pet for Patriotic Vets Program at 181.
Wow.
Thank, thank you to Superior Plumbing for their donations. There's, without their support, we wouldn't have this program. And thank you to Cobb County Animal Shelter and the staff there, Shanna Luke and, and all the staff for partnering with Superior Plumbing to make this possible for our veterans. This Wednesday, tomorrow from 11 to 1, the drive-through food pantry is moved to the Civic Center. So food will be distributed on a first come, first served basis, one package per family while supplies last. And each package will contain up to 20 pounds of produce in addition to shelf-stable items. Cobb County Animal Services has a program of discount for adoptions for regular public adoptions going on now through February 4th for Valentine's Day. And dogs and cats, kittens and puppies, $40, and they're fully vetted. They have their shots, their spay or neutered, and their microchip. You do need an appointment, so go to CobbCounty.org/pets to schedule a visit and take home your new forever best friend. And then our extension and 4H office is having their annual plant sale fundraiser. You can sign up to get pre-orders from January 4th, which has already started through March the 5th. And the pickup date is Saturday, March 20th. There is a phone number to call. Contact the office at 770-528-4070. And you can place your order. And that's all I have, and thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner. You certainly haven't missed a beat. Even though you're not present with us, we appreciate you and your thorough review of things going on here at the county and appreciate your recognition, again, of Planning Commissioner Judy Williams.
Thank you.
With that, there are a couple of people who I'd like to introduce publicly who've joined my office and who some of you have been reaching out to via email and by phone. If I can be joined up front here for everyone on Cobb TV 23 to see, Ms. Brunessa Drayton and Jennifer DeValt. Hi. You guys can go to the mic there, and we can see you over there. We don't just want to see you, we want to hear you. But just want to introduce you guys, if you can just say hello and let us know your title and anything else you'd like for us to know. Don't be shy.
Hi. Thank you, Chairwoman. I'm Jennifer DeValt, and I am your new Executive Assistant. And I am managing your calendar and answering emails.
And you're doing a great job of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so much more. We appreciate having you.
Thank you.
Yes. And also, next?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brunessa Drayton, and I serve at the pleasure of our Chairwoman, Lisa Cupid, and I am her Chief Assistant. And I will be handling special projects, special initiatives, and things of that nature, as well as day-to-day operations in the office.
Thank you. I appreciate having both of you. I get excited at the end of every day, knowing that I have great help here in the office. And it is not to be overlooked that both of you came from Cobb Library System. And there's something about serving the public where they are, and you guys have done an excellent job. And I'm so grateful that you're meeting all of our citizens where they are every day in our office. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah. As was shared with some Commissioners, we have some appointments that are open through each of our positions. And I have some appointments available through the Chair and have a deadline that's coming up that will be January 31st. So just encourage you to please sign up today. We've had a link put out in our weekly newsletter. And if you need any additional assistance, please feel free to reach our office. I'm also seeking, well, GDOT is actually seeking your input on our I-285 improvement project. But it's very important to the county to know that our citizens are weighing in on what improvements can occur around I-285. I know we periodically get concerns from residents about activity on our interstate. This is your opportunity to directly impact the outcome of the projects that are planned to expand express lanes along GDOT and add exit ramps. And if you would like to see those improvements come near you, please, by all means, weigh in on this project. There will be a live presentation and Q and A that will be held next week, Thursday, February 11th, from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Or, excuse me, in a couple of weeks, the Thursday, February 11th, from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Each week in our newsletter, we post jobs that have been listed by companies here in Cobb and throughout metro Atlanta. Please check those out. As we know, we are in a pandemic. There are businesses that are still hiring. And we want to make sure that all of our citizens have opportunity to connect to employment and gainful employment. So please, if you know someone looking for work or if you yourself are looking for work, please sign up for our newsletter, and you'll get access to several job postings every week. As was shared, we have a drive-through pantry that will occur this Wednesday at Cobb Civic Center. For our businesses, we are in a pandemic, and certainly we know there has been impact with respect to housing. But there's also been impact to our business community. And want people to know that our chamber has been an excellent partner in sharing resources for businesses to connect to different programs so that they can continue to operate. And encourage you to please check out their website and get linked up with various resources that are provided here. They're done everything for... They're done everything from, not only provide links, but also provide some Q and A to help clarify different policies behind some of the programs that are available. And again, as was shared, just again, want to honor Judy Williams for her service here at the county. You know, it's unfortunate that she did pass from COVID, and, you know, we've had a lot of communications with residents about the vaccine, and even though the vaccine is rolling out, we still are experiencing very high levels of, of persons who are being diagnosed with COVID. Here on the screen, we have a two-week case average per 100,000 people that was last captured on January 22nd. Even though you see that trend line coming down towards the end of the graph, you can see that we still are a lot higher than we were when we had our peak over the summer. So I just want to strongly encourage our residents to take precaution to ensure that we are not exacerbating the length or the severity of this pandemic. Although people are being vaccinated at this time, we still ask for you to stick with the three W's, particularly of wearing your mask, of watching your distance, and washing your hands. Everything that we do helps to bring these numbers down, and it helps to relieve the burden, as was discussed today, that has been experienced with our public health workers and also our teachers, and we certainly would like for everyone to do their part. Lastly, I just want to address a brief comment, and, you know, we're here to make sure that the county runs day-to-day, and a lot of what we do by way of our agenda is, may seem perfunctory or administrative, but at the end of the day, we are policymakers, and we are here to make tough decisions to help impact the outcome of our citizens in Cobb County, and that includes protecting their health, safety, and welfare. And I do value the comments of all of our citizens, and even that of DA King, and I'm pretty sure his comments were directed towards me with respect to our 287G program, and I can only sympathize with the impact that, you know, that life-changing event happened to create the Dustin Inman Society. But I can also share as a Commissioner that we have several families and several communities that have been completely vulnerable to, to, to crime because they have not been reporting incidents of crime that have happened in their community, and that makes our communities unsafe, and it makes neighboring communities unsafe. And a lot of it has been influenced because of the 287G program, where people have felt inhibited from calling the police for assistance. And I recognize it is controversial, you know, immigration in this country has been controversial, and it hasn't been fully addressed as it needs to. And, you know, I'm from a family of immigrants, and I can only, you know, and I look at how many of my family members have struggled to pay their way to, to get here and to pave the way for others, it's an arduous process to make it into this country. But what I don't want to do is for us to promulgate policies that make anybody who lives here in Cobb County unsafe, who, and particularly citizens here in our county unsafe, where it grows beyond just being a policy that impacts individuals, but it is hampering our communities and exacerbating our crime levels. And so this may be an issue up for debate, but I just wanted to be able to share my reasoning for my support of that policy, which I know, which I know weighed on a lot of people here as that was put forth this week by our Sheriff, and hope that at the end of the day, that what we'll see is a safer Cobb County. With that, thank you, thank you all of you for tuning in. For our Commissioners, we have a busy week ahead of us with our retreat, but I look forward to all of us getting together to determine how we're going to move Cobb County forward over the next year. Thank you, and have a good night.